Order at four thirty to stand for the pledge allegiance. Chairman, start us off.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, a presentation from our students. Come on up to the podium.
Hello, we are the student school representatives of Seabrook Middle School this year. We're happy to represent our school. My name is Trevor Greeley.
And I'm Brittany Wood.
And we're in eighth grade.
Fifth grade experienced diverse RAM rally had great presentation. They also started learning with Zatara, which is good practice for the upcoming year.
The sixth graders are learning of the five themes of geography and social studies and to use maps with longitude and latitude.
The seventh grade had their cooking labs this month. They started by making pudding and worked their way up to English muffin pizzas.
In eighth grade this month in science, we learned about what causes seasons and about the moon's phases. In LA, we are reading the crossover. The boys soccer team has had a wonderful season, trying their best through every game and growing throughout the season. Coach Coder has had a wonderful time coaching and watching the team grow and have fun on the field.
The girls soccer team has had their best season by far, winning against many teams and led by many eighth graders. Coach Walker is very proud of his team, which is the best one he's seen in over nine years of coaching.
The cross-country team has seen their fastest year yet. With one of the smallest teams in the division, we are still placed third overall in our league. Coach McCusker is very happy to see the team grow and excel this year.
The volleyball team has improved throughout the season with many new players learning the sport. They are hoping for a tremendous victory against Brown. Coach Delaney is very proud of the growth this team has shown throughout the season.
The field hockey team has had an amazing season. Even though they started off with low numbers, they grew a strong team and have tried their best through all their games. This year, Coach Platt is super proud and excited to see the players grow throughout middle, high school, and beyond.
The SMS art club launched on October 2nd and meets every Tuesday after school until 2:25 p.m. Open to all grades and provides a great opportunity for students to connect and collaborate with peers from different age groups and classes. If you're a fan of open students, you'll love the way our art club is organized.
Tech club started October 7th, teaching students coding and engineering skills. The chess club started yesterday with Ms. Dow teaching the middle school fantastic chess skills. The eighth grade is starting their wreath fundraiser this week to provide funds for the eighth grade Washington DC trip this May. Each wreath is $25. Please help support the eighth grade and buy a wreath.
We had our first RAM rally of the year with presentation of RAM awards. The RAM awards are given to respectful, accountable, motivated, and stage students. There was a staff versus student hockey game, and we look forward to reading the features next rally.
The sixth graders had a phenomenal trip to the ecology school, learning about wildlife, habitats, and creatures that night. Thank you for listening.
Have a great night.
There are some more seats on this side, folks. I'm gonna make a motion at this time. I don't public comment at drop down. It's gonna move you guys up so you can speak. Make a motion to open public comment next. All in favor?
No.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak? On agenda items, anything that you have to share? Okay, so it's open for thirty minutes. Maria, who made the motion?
I did the second.
Myself, Jen, and then all in favor. Hi, and I just, I'm gonna settle just a few ground rules now, because we have a lot of people here. Usually it's, you know, three to five minutes. You can share the five minutes, but I'm also gonna make a motion tonight that we try to stay within the five minutes if we can, so everybody can speak. So I'm gonna make a motion to try to keep it to five minutes, give or take. And I'm looking for a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and I'm just gonna ask you to say your name and your, where you live, your residency.
Colleen Sousa, and I teach art at Seabrook Middle School, so I don't live there. I just walked in, and I'm looking at the agenda, and it seems like you just moved public comment up, because I'd like public comment to remain third after the presentation.
We'll leave public comment open anyways, but we usually have public comment at the beginning anyways, so everybody can speak and not have to stay all night if they don't want to. Get a pretty lengthy night tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next. Step right up and just say your name and your address, please.
My name's Charles Morrell. I live on Ansglen in Seabrook.
Thank you.
I've been reading a lot on some of the Seabrook Facebook pages about some of the concerns that a lot of parents are having about the way the school system is going here, in the town. We hear that demographics is why our children are falling behind considering in comparison with other children from the other school districts. Hear that the scholastic materials which are being offered our children aren't as advanced as those in the other schools. You hear that they're, I don't wanna go into all, but what I'm here, I'm gonna be doing is I'm gonna, I'm gonna show up. I'm gonna listen. I'm gonna learn more about what I'm being, I'm hearing and I'm being told. And look, I was a part of that demographic back in the seventies when we went to school from here, and we were looked down upon because they said we were the poor kids, and now they're saying that the demographic is that our parents don't have enough time to sit and read with their children, and that's why they're behind. And why is that? They say, well, the Seabrook people are poorer than the other towns, and so they, they're both working, and they don't have time for their kids. Well, you know, there's another way to handle all that than to blame the parents or blame the students. There's another way to handle it by, by making sure that the students get the best teachers, they get the best instruction, that they're given the time to excel in class. And if what I hear is true, I voted against SAU 21 removing the town from it, because I wasn't aware of exactly what it meant. But I, I'm aware of what it means now, and I'm leaning heavily towards it. And, and I'm retired. I've been, I haven't had a child in, in a public school for a long time, but I've got grandchildren. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stand idly by. I'm gonna be an involved grandparent. And if that means getting on the boards, either this one or the selectmen's board, to look into these kinds of things and see if it can't be worked out, then that's what I'm gonna do, because this is ridiculous. I lived it, going to the high school, being told we weren't good enough, and I'm not gonna let your children go to that high school, being told they're not good enough. And that's all I'm gonna say. Is it every second Tuesday of the month?
We've been meeting a lot. This is our nineteenth meeting since March, so, but we try to stick to that. We may have to move it a little, because we wanna be able to have Patrick, who works a lot on Tuesdays, so we're gonna try to see what we can do to get everybody here, but for the most part, yes.
How do we find out what, when the meeting will be held?
They should, it will be, so do you have the SAU 21 website? Yeah, no.
No, from what I've heard about SAU 21, I kinda stay away from it.
Okay, they posted out here about the school, and usually it's posted, I'm trying to think where else would be a good spot to let them know.
When's the next meeting decided?
It's on the school calendar. It's on the sign-out front.
When's the next meeting decided? Or is it decided tonight?
Right now, it's already set for the second Tuesday, November, but the board could change that. And then to, to your point, it is posted on the SAU 21 website. It's posted on the school website, and it's on the sign-out in front of the elementary school.
Okay, I can see that. I live right out the street.
And the only thing that I do wanna share with you also, in addition, is that we may have another meeting toward the end of the month, because we're waiting for the state to release our test scores, so we can have a big forum and release them to everybody and maybe put another presentation on. So keep an eye out. Maybe the selectmen can help us to get the word out on channel twenty-two.
Okay, I'll expect that from my selectmen.
Put him, put him on.
And just, for $9,000, you can get a better quality education as far as test scores at Sacred Heart. For $14,000, you can get better quality test scores from the Portsmouth Christian Academy. There are other places that you can get for less than $24,000 a better education for your children, according to test scores and what people are saying about the demographics of the town of Seabrook. Yeah, cut me off.
No, we're the teachers. We're not the parents.
That's okay, but he's speaking in general. Please don't interrupt.
I love my teachers.
Yep. Thank you for speaking. And just a point of order. When you wanna speak, you speak to the board at the podium, not the people speaking.
Noted.
Okay, come on up.
Rachel Turcot, 205 South Main Street.
I can't hear you, dear. Go ahead.
Rachel Turcot, 205 South Main Street.
Yes.
I just have a game I gotta get back to, so I just wanna give you guys the jerseys and ask that you guys accept the donations of the athletic uniforms for the state of Middle School. Here are the proofs I have so far. I have two sports that aren't ready yet.
Yes. So the PTO, just so everybody knows, has donated, thank you, dear, all the uniforms for the sports for Seabrook School. So I'd like to give them a nice hand. That looks to thirteen thousand or more that they're doing this for the kids. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you, Rachel. Next. Anybody wanna speak? You have a little more time. Come on in. We can squeeze in somewhere. Just come on in. So we're in public comment. Is anybody else, would anybody else like to speak? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
My name is Ann Marie Huster. I'm a Seabrook resident and the sixth grade special education teacher. I wanna start off by asking a few questions of the board. My first question is whether Anne Marie Banfield requested to be put on the agenda this evening, or if you, the board, invited her?
Yes, she did request.
Thank you. Secondly, I would like to know why the rest of the administration team is not allowed at the table.
We have our two principals by policy, our superintendent and our BA, and that's what we're sticking to from now on. We, I didn't realize that was the way it is.
What's the reason, though?
It's by policy. Until we change it, it's staying that way. Okay?
Due to recent decisions made by this board, I chose to review the Seabrook School Board goals that you wrote. I would like to pay special attention to goals number one and three. There has been zero communication with the faculty about anything you are currently working on, besides trying to withdraw from our SAU. Let's take tonight, for example. Although we are aware of the agenda, no communication was made with the faculty as to the reason or the benefit of having a non-resident, supposed educational expert speak. This individual took the place of a fellow staff member intending to share the progress our school is making with the new language arts curriculum, wit and wisdom.
Was that a question?
You stifle our voice and make us wait another month to share an important part of our students' education. You are invited to this school repeatedly, and you don't come. How does this create a climate that is inclusive or comfortable for us? Three out of the five members of this board's agenda of having Seabrook schools withdraw from the SAU is your only priority. Your words are empty. Your actions do not back up what you say and what you put in writing as your goals.
And I just, I just wanna let everybody know that wit and wisdom, we did, I did not get information of who was presenting, and that is gonna be moved for the next meeting, hopefully, within the next two weeks, so that we can have a presentation from, who's gonna be presenting? Do you know, Melita?
I'd direct that question to the principal.
Who's presenting?
Alyssa Dow.
I saw it in your report, a lot about it, but I didn't know who was presenting. So that will, that will do for the next presentation, and hopefully we'll have the results from the state to go along with it.
Alyssa Dow. I teach sixth grade language arts. So my colleagues and I are on the front lines of change, and we're ready for performing the great work occurring in our language arts classes to improve fluency, writing, reading comprehension. I was extremely disappointed to hear that our wit and wisdom presentation was pushed until next month to let Anne Marie Banfield share a presentation. The school board has a goal that states that Seabrook Board will continue to support the administration's mission of engaging all learners in research-based instruction in a safe environment. I, I do not feel supported. I don't believe our administration feels supported. You say that you want teachers to have a voice. Your voices are stifled by a lobbyist who writes articles for the Greenwich Rock, which states on our About Us page that they are, and I quote, "Fire-breathing, right-wing, hard-charging, gun-toting, opinionated, outspoken, rabble-rousing, letter-writing, radio-microphone-stomping conservatives and rational libertarians. If you attack or undermine those principles, you might get a trip to the rhetorical woodshed. It's just that simple", end quote. According to Seabrook Board Policy Section B, School Board Governance and Operations, Board Member Ethics, it states, "As a member of the school board and in accordance with my oath and office, I will strive to refuse to surrender or subordinate that judgment to any individual or special interest group." Anne Marie Banfield Field represents a special interest group. Giving her the floor for the hard-working teachers of this building who want to share their work to make changes, not only stifles our voices, but creates a divide between the school and the board, which desperately needs to be repaired. I put my heart and my soul into this school and community, and always ask myself whenever I make a decision, how will this make a positive impact on students? I ask the board to operate by asking themselves the same question. How will my decision create a positive impact on students? Because if there is no positive impact on our students, then what is our purpose? We need to change the narrative, focus on supporting one another in the good work that we are doing in our classrooms, on the front lines. Please come in, see the work that we are doing, have meetings with us to talk about our curriculum, prioritize our hard work over an outside voice who does not live in the community or know any of our students. That is all I ask.
And I'm just gonna say another thing, because we're at the board. So Anne Marie is, from what I understand, is going to present something about academic excellence. We're not gonna have any political anything going on in this room, just to clarify. And wit and wisdom, so I think we're missing two board members tonight, and I really would like a full pack when you guys come here, because I think it's important. So I will get ahold of Alyssa and make sure what day's good for you, and we will plan it around you to come back to the board.
Well, it's not just me. There's others.
Who are this presenting, all right? Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Laura Lekowski. I'm a kindergarten teacher, Seabrook resident, and a parent of children that attended SES and SMS. My comments tonight were written with the help of the kindergarten team, and we feel that our message is shared by many of our colleagues. I'd like to take the opportunity to share some statistics with the board, administration, and community members. In September, all students, kindergarten through fourth grade, participated in the Acadian literacy screening. This is a quick one-on-one assessment completed by our reading team. In kindergarten, it gives us information about the early foundational literacy skills that our students are coming in with as they begin their kindergarten journey. It also helps to determine which students may need extra support or reading intervention. Recently, the kindergarten and reading teams have begun to look at trends in these scores. In September 2023, approximately sixty students were screened, and about thirty of those students scored below or well below benchmark. That means that fifty percent of the incoming kindergarten students were not able to demonstrate foundational, age-appropriate literacy skills when they came in. This September, about sixty percent of our current kindergarten students came in below grade level expectations on the Acadian screening and will likely struggle to access the kindergarten curriculum. As we continue the conversation about student achievement, we feel it's important that everyone involved have a better understanding of a bigger picture. So today, we'd like to offer the perspectives through our early childhood lens. For many of our students, an achievement gap has begun before they have entered school. When this occurs, lots of supports are provided for students to help close this gap, like differentiated instruction, triannual screening to measure growth, reading and math interventions, small group instructions, and some one-on-one instruction as well. As a matter of fact, we've seen positive results, and at the end of last year, proficiency scores went from forty-eight to seventy-four. This is a testament to our foundation's program, our interventionists, and our teachers. Although this shows great progress, we can see that there are still students who struggle. An important fact to point out about achievement gap is that it's not always easy to close, and it can grow over time. This is because new skills and concepts that students are learning are based on previous taught skills and concepts. So if a student is not solid with a skill, it can be very hard to learn the next skill. While we do everything we can to ensure the growth and success of all kindergarten students, those who enter the school year below age-appropriate skill expectations may not achieve at the same rate as their peers. This is not to say that an achievement gap can't be closed, or that students who are behind with skills will not be able to catch up. But we often see those students struggle year after year. Over decades, the administrators have changed, new programs have been used and then abandoned, and staff has turned out, turned over, but we're still struggling with the issue of low achievement. Blaming administrators or tossing out programs has never been the solution. One fact that we know from studies is that the brain development prior to age five is the foundation and the building block that helps support school success. This tells us about the importance of educating parents on how crucial it is to foster early learning and literacy skills at home. When students begin school with a solid foundation, they are better able to access the curriculum and achieve or even surpass grade level expectations. When children come out of the gate already behind their peers, it's very difficult to catch up. We can share that most of the students who are able to meet benchmark with the kindergarten screening were students who had been in preschool. That is sending a message loud and clear that we need to listen to as a community. We need to, we need the support from the school board, not to play flame, but to help us help our students and parents by providing more opportunities for early childhood education. As teachers, it is so discouraging to hear misinformation about achievement scores mentioned in the news, or to hear that our schools are failing our children. There are other factors that contribute to students that are struggling, even above and beyond what we've discussed here today. Our hope is that all the factors will be addressed as conversations continue regarding student achievement, and that we will work together to overcome some of these obstacles. Thank you.
Hi, Dawn Raymond, seventh grade language arts. I'm also a former graduate of Seabrook Middle School, a former graduate of Winnicott High School. This will be short, because I came up here unprepared for the moment. It's super frustrating to hear what's being said in regards to, oh, I, you know, I saw this on Facebook, I saw this on social media, because then, well, I guess it must be true. But what I can say is, nobody here in this room, aside from administration, my coworkers, have even attempted to ask me what I'm doing in my classroom. So, and, and super also upsetting to hear, we're, it, almost like we're hearing intentionally setting the kids up to the high school unprepared. I'm a former student that was at the high school, so I have some of those similar experiences that people are talking about. And we're all here for the same reason. We're all trying to improve achievement, and we're seeing improvement. For example, Laura talked about the, you know, forty percent to seventy percent achievement, and I've seen growth such as, you know, thirty percent to close to sixty percent achievement this year, last year, sorry, which some may argue is fifty-seven great, or we've seen that what we're seeing in the other schools? No, but it is a significant achievement or growth from thirty to nearly sixty percent. What I, people come up here and just look at teachers, oh, it's, oh, nine thousand, just nine thousand, we can send them to Sacred Heart. But one thing I don't hear is support. If you want to see achievement, I need to see support. Okay? Nobody's coming into my classroom to see what I'm doing. No one's emailing me, calling me, what are you doing? I will be presenting, one of the presenters on wit and wisdom. But we're trying to make change. We're trying to seek growth. We're not just sitting back, like people seem to think that we're sitting back and apparently doing nothing in the classroom all day. But what I'm not seeing is the support. Reach out, come into my classroom, ask me about my curriculum, ask me about student achievement, because there's a lot of things that go into what students achieve, such as, yes, leaning at home or lack thereof, but also sometimes behaviors in the classroom. Also, you know, being hungry, having an off day, there's many, many reasons. So we're not saying it's one reason, but one thing I'm not hearing is support. Every time I come to one of these meetings, it feels like I, I'm being attacked as a teacher. But to raise test scores, we have to be a community. To raise achievement, we have to be a community. So what I should be getting is support, not saying, oh, these are our test scores, oh, we're gonna withdraw from the SAU, oh, we don't wanna send our kids to Winnicott. Send them to Sacred Heart. We should be grouping up for a common goal behind one another and supporting each other and supporting teachers in their classroom and their hard work. Thank you.
Hello, Rebecca Sherbonne, eighth grade language arts teacher, coach, advocate for teachers and for kids. First off, I just wanna bring up a point of order that the Seabrook district policy states that the board will provide a minimum of thirty minutes to hear public comment, and that it might be extended by a majority vote of the board. Obviously, we have a really great output of input today, and my hope is that if there is a need for an extension, that you will consider it. So that's my, that's my first request. My second request is, I read an article by Anne Marie Banfield, "Finally, A School Board Willing to Stand Up and Fight for Their Students." There were some questions that were asked in that article that I'm not sure if they were answered or not. I have faith in my administration that they did answer, but in case they didn't, I just wanted to address them quickly, specifically the questions that were directly asked about providing a list of curriculum and our programs used in the following subjects. This is easily available online and is a child search on Google away. I've printed out copies of every single competency for science, math, and language arts, if anybody is interested in looking at them. I know that I'm a little bit old-school myself. I like a hard copy. So I do have hard copies for anybody that's interested. So I do have hard copies for anybody that's interested in looking at that. It was asked about the pedagogy that we use in our classes, uh, in each of the core subjects. We use constructivists, we use collaborative, reflective, integrative, inquiry-based approaches. We make it so that your kids have every opportunity to access education as differentiated as possible, because that's what these kids need. They are coming from every single walk of life. And it is our passion and our hope and our dream that we are reaching every single one of these kids. It is what we do, it is what we live. We come here sick, we come here defeated, we come here tired and insulted. And I do just wanna reach out to the, to the gentleman who walked up here first. It was no means of disrespect to point out that we were the teachers. I do believe that he believed that we were parents, and I just want you to know, sir.
What I saw was someone go like this.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted you to know that we were, we were the parent, we were, we were the teachers. Just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were respectful of you.
My daughter was a teacher, and I've listened to three of you talk, and you know what all of you are saying? That it's the administration's fault.
I don't, I'm honestly did not say that.
I, okay, not us.
I'm gonna quiet him down like he's hiding us.
I just, okay, everybody quiet down.
Thank you for that point of order, Maria. Um, the other question was, are tutors available to children? Thank you. Are tutors available to children? Yes, I do believe that every single teacher in every single grade makes themselves available after school at least one day a week. Um, and then there are some of us who are even beyond that. So we are at your children's disposal, we give up our lunches, we give up our time, we give up anything that they need. If they are struggling and they want time with us, I don't think that there is one teacher in this school that would not give it to them. We love your kids. We want the very best for them always. I cannot answer the question of how many students are fully prepared and complete Algebra I by eighth grade. I am an eighth grade teacher, but I am a words girl. So I can't answer that for you. Do you have enough teachers and paraprofessionals for each grade level? Absolutely not. Paraprofessionals don't get paid nearly enough, although it was very gracious that their contract was passed this year, and I do believe that that helped them enormously. For them, I don't believe it is enough. Um, it was, I'm quoting, "It was extremely disturbing to listen to the parent describe what students do not know." Some of this is basic academic content that can be mastered by using quality curriculum and pedagogy. If no one knows the answers to the above questions, how does one discuss ways to make a positive impact in the classroom? I, I don't, come in. We have repeatedly invited the board in, and it's, it's really disheartening when you don't come. I have been an employee of the Seabrook School District for almost seventeen years. I have served this district as a teacher, a mentor, a coach for both sports teams and the drama club. I've been a vocal and passionate advocate for students and teachers alike, giving up a large majority of my personal time outside of school in order to fight what is, for what is best and what is right for the students of the Seabrook School District. Tonight, I, along with three other teachers, were slotted to report out to you as requested by the board on a new pilot we're implementing in order to reach our students in a different way in order to hopefully raise test scores. Because of the presentation, that was afforded a great deal of time tonight, Seabrook School teachers were pushed off of the agenda and rescheduled. A common practice with this board that, in my opinion, happens all too frequently. You claim that teachers are a high priority on your list of things that you support, but when you cancel important teacher input focused on the progress of our children in order to afford others a platform to discuss how our schools are failing your children, I think you should really take a look at where the true failure is. The failure is in the support of our school. From you, not from the majority of you, but from some of you, and it's teachers who have dedicated their lives to teaching your children. When you afford a person precious time at these meetings, shoving teachers off your agenda to speak about encouraging Seabrook parents and guardians to take a look at alternative forms of education outside of our school district, you have failed the teachers that you love to say you support. You essentially are delivering the message to us that we are not enough, that we are failing your kids, when in truth, I believe many of us feel it is the other way around. Some members of the school board are failing us and failing our children. Hearing some person come into our school library encouraging people to jump ship and abandoning the very public school that we have so vehemently been trying to improve, the schools some of you attended, is indicating to us that you do not trust us to do what you have hired us to do in the first place. We have invited you into our classrooms and you have refused, spouting off about some policy that we've asked to be informed about, but the board has yet to provide. We've invited you to productions, no shows. We've invited you to classroom presentations, no shows. And some members have essentially forced their way onto committees and then demanding reschedule after reschedule after reschedule, causing entire teams of teachers to reschedule themselves and their families, and then sometimes not even showing up at all. There's been false data delivered to news outlets. And regardless of the intent, the lens this puts on teachers, you make us look terrible. You're public fighting with each other, your contentious relationship with the SAU and the message that you wanna hear from other teachers, not just the ones that always speak. Look around. The teachers are here, but they don't feel safe speaking in front of you, and honestly, they feel that whatever they say won't make a difference anyway. You have essentially defeated your teachers.
I'm gonna give you just another minute or so.
You are interrupting me, and I believe I still have time on the clock.
I'll give her my.
Thank you, I'll take your five.
We're not doing that tonight.
You have essentially defeated your teachers. So are you saying that I can't continue?
I'm gonna give you about another minute or so, go ahead.
How gracious, thank you. You have essentially defeated your teachers, those of us in the trenches every day, taking care of our children, nurturing them through mornings and difficult lessons, and more than anything, trying to protect them from the messages that the board is constantly delivering about them, that they are below average, that they aren't as smart as other kids, that they can't read, they can't do math, they can't learn, they can't test well. Their scores have gone up exponentially, but it is not enough for you. They still aren't as good as the other towns. All they hear you say is what they can't do. When are you going to start looking at what they can do?
You just say your name and your address.
Christina Kaiser, two forty-three Southley Street. Um, before I get to what I was thinking, I just wanna say thank you, because you guys have done amazing work. And as a parent of middle school and elementary kids, I for one am sick of hearing it too, because my kids are not below proficiency. They are proficient at or above in every subject, and that's all elementary and middle school. And I hate the messaging, I hate the messaging.
Okay, let her speak, please, dear.
That's not saying that everyone is, but I'm telling you, there is another side to this. And the only side that you're hearing is the negative. Then again, it's not doing anything, we're not changing anything. But that's, that's neither here nor there, but thank you, thank you for what you do. Your work is important, and we value you. And even though you don't hear it, the messaging you're hearing here is negative. There are plenty of parents, plenty of community members that are thankful for you and that appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
To move on from that, um, I wanna bring up a non-public session that happened after September ninth meeting. Um, we had board members, four board members there. You met in the conference room and you discussed legal counsel. This is based on the minutes that were provided by the school board. Um, you supposedly considered multiple law firms to represent the Seabrook School Board. You decided on a firm and then accepted their offer. You're going to reach out to accept their offer, that's what the minutes say. Non-public rules basically say that that's not a non-public session. That should not be happening in non-public, this should be happening in public. We are the taxpayers, we're the ones that are gonna fund this, this firm, whoever this random firm is that's now going to be, um, supporting you as a school board. And with that being said, um, we have a quote from the withdrawal committee meeting from a school board member that says, um, let's see. But what you don't know is that there's something going on, that there's absolutely no way this school board can even mend what's going on. And I won't go there, because you didn't put it in minutes last time, so you're not going to want to this time. But I can promise you, we are past just not getting along. We have legal issues going on, and it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money, a lot more than it's going to cost to pull out. And I can promise you that, that's my promise to you. So we have a school board member saying that there are legal issues going on between the board and the SAU. We as the taxpayers know nothing about this. We don't know the firm that's representing, we don't know how much it's going to cost. We literally know no details about what the school board is so upset about against the SAU, other than the random comments of there was a video that was taken illegally. But we haven't been provided any information about this video.
When is superintendent?
Was this video, um, did, did we do an investigation? Did you ask anybody that was there? Did we talk to the person who actually took the video, who was operating the camera? I mean, have any of those things been done?
Christina, you should know, you're a school board member, that stuff you can't discuss.
We can't.
You're not providing that information.
But yet you keep making comments about what it is.
But you don't know what it is.
It's only little nuggets.
It's been made public what happened.
It's doomsday things, we keep saying, oh, all of this is gonna happen, this is so bad.
It took you a year to even tell us anything.
You can keep, that's hilarious, because, you know what?
Because it's a school board member.
You know what, I'm not gonna argue, but what I'm gonna say is that I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it.
I keep your feeling, you picked.
Continue.
I'm tired of it. I'm tired, and you act like you were the best school board member when you told us not to.
Can we please have a point of order?
We had teachers with death threats.
I honestly know I do what they're talking about with.
Yeah, you do, you know a lot.
Anyway, so we're gonna get back to what I was saying, because the legal issue, again, so we have a non-public meeting that shouldn't have been non-public. We should have the public information, the taxpayers should be aware of the firm that you chose and how much you're now paying. But what I can tell you is that the financial report that is in this board meeting's agenda, um, the legal budget is eight thousand for the year. So far since July first, this board has spent thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
That's what happens when you have a superintendent, you have power of office, you do right to know law.
That is what happens when a board is.
No, I know, because you guys don't know the whole story. So, okay, Christina, you gotta, I, I, like a minute left. You wanna see the bills from Cassius? You don't tell your board numbers to be quiet, I'm sorry.
All right, well, what I find very interesting is that every time I get up here, I'm told that I need to sit down. I'm told that I can't speak on another item, or that I have to speak. I'm definitely not gonna go for my public comment, that I can guarantee.
I said, yeah, in general.
Um, again, the legal budget, eight thousand dollars for an entire year, and in three months, this board has spent over four thousand dollars a month in legal fees.
Have you seen the invoices?
That is what I'm discussing. So, um, if the board would share with the taxpayers who this firm is and how much your offer to, for them to represent you, and then any information that could provide the taxpayers any idea of what we're subsequently being paid, you know, what we're gonna pay for it, because, again, at the withdrawal committee meeting, the comments are, well, it's gonna cost a lot more. If you don't withdraw, it's basically a threat. If you don't choose to withdraw, we're gonna charge, it's gonna be so much more money.
Because it'll happen before the draw.
I read it, what I'm telling.
Christina, you got like thirty seconds, let's wrap it up, I'm sorry, we're gonna close public comment. We have a business meeting this evening.
I know, I know.
I tell you, we have non-public tonight, and hopefully we'll have more to share with you after that meeting, okay?
But again, are we talking about the non-public that wasn't supposed to be a non-public?
We cannot share anything, dear, with you right now.
But you can, because that.
You know, we had trainees where they told us we couldn't speak a word in public about anything that didn't belong for non-publics.
You were on the board for three years. And non-public is supposed to be about personnel, you're meeting with legal.
Don't trainings.
You're meeting with legal, but you weren't meeting with legal, you were meeting about deciding.
You don't know that.
I'm looking at your minutes, I know the vibe is.
So are you finished, because I'm gonna close public comment, it's, it's five minutes over the thirty?
All right.
Okay, so wrap it up.
I'm really, I'm really trying to stay calm, I'm very frustrated as a taxpayer. Yes, I was a previous board member, I'm not saying I was the greatest board member ever to walk the planet.
That's not for this one.
But you know what, you did, Maria, you did, you hosted, yes, you absolutely did, you laughed at me.
Let me ask you to sit down now, please.
You're not even supposed to.
Please sit down, we've gotta take order of this meeting.
Okay, so I would like answers as taxpayer. I would put answers on the legal information that we're paying.
Jen second, all in favor?
You have parents and community members who wanna speak.
Public comment is closed for right now, because I go finally.
I'm going to refuse my first amendment right to speak to you right now.
We will open public comment after this is over. So thank you very much.
It's on record.
Okay, now let's move on. And if we decide to open it, I'll let him out.
Who made the motion, who made the second?
I made the motion, Jen second, and all in favor. And once we get control of the meeting, and we have our meeting and our presentation and our non-public, if we decide to add public comment, we will, for now, we're following policy. Okay, next on the agenda is presentation, Ann Marie Vanfield. And I'm just gonna set a little bit of, um, for the ruckus, yeah. I'm gonna just set a little bit of, ah, take a hold of the meeting here. So Ann Marie, excuse me, because I can ask you to leave if you don't listen. We're in a meeting, if you wanna be angry and shout out, you're gonna need to go in the hall. And that is the last time I'm saying it, because it's not appropriate. So Ann, there's you, I knew that teacher's laughing at board numbers, that's wonderful. Go ahead, Ann. And I don't want any interruption when she's saying this. Oh my God. Um, you know, I can, if you, if the board would rather, if we can't take control of the meeting, we can have an officer come and take a hold of it. Okay, so go ahead, Ann.
Okay, good evening, um, and my name is Ann Levy. I'm a education researcher for over twenty years. Parental rights advocate in New Hampshire, and my focus is always on excellence in education. I'm a strong supporter of public schools and a past member of NYC Hold Math Advocacy Organization.
Ann, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt your people, microphone towards you just a little bit, because I can't hear you. Thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. In addition, I tutor kids and, um, have done similar things in the past for other schools, other side schools, help the dioceses on, um, preparing and improving standards, academic standards. Can you hear me now?
No.
Not really good. Someone turn the lights down so we can see the board for everybody too. The switch is right behind Heather over there, everything. Just hold on, Ann, I'm sorry.
Sure.
There we go, settle down, turn down the lights, go ahead. I'm sorry, um, let's see if we can hear you.
So I, I am a member of SAU twenty-one, New Hampton, uh, and I've been watching this school board meetings for probably over a year. And as a parental advocate, I have had to, um, help parents in school in Seabrook. So I can see the tension. Um, the reason I asked to come here tonight is because I've been researching education for twenty years. I thought maybe I can present some information that might help you going forward, whether you leave the SAU, whether you stay with the SAU, that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm not here to point fingers, um, at anyone in particular. I don't know what anybody knew at some of these times when, um, maybe a program was adopted. I don't know who adopted the programs, I don't know who came up with some of these things. So I'm not here to point fingers, but I am here to give you a different viewpoint, a different perspective on some of this stuff, as someone who's been researching education for all this time. So I did ask a series of questions of the SAU, and yes, they did provide all of the answers for me. Thank you for that. I'm coming here to analyze ways to improve academic outcomes, that's basically it. It's just to give you some different perspective to do that and build upon information that I've shared with the SAU twenty-one and all board members in the past, and then point you to some reliable sources or some other sources that might help you look forward in terms of how do we improve academic outcomes. So this was one of the questions that I asked, and I can tell you that this is gonna take a while. And it's gonna take me a while to get through question one, and then the other ones will go a little quicker. So I asked about what programs and curriculum were being used in the subjects, and I was given these answers. And then from that point forward, I started looking and researching it, and what I can, what I could access online. So in the past, I know that I have brought up Core Knowledge as being a resource. I, I know that Meredith had, um, mentioned that, uh, that she's familiar with it or is getting familiar with it. And Core Knowledge is, uh, puts out the scope and sequence. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But it's been around for a very long time, and what's nice about it And what's nice about it is it tells teachers in very simple, simple language, what should be taught in first grade, what should be taught in second grade, what should be taught in third grade in each subject. So, it's very simple, uh, it's highly respected, and it gives you that kind of information. There are other resources that you can look to too. So, what I tend to do is I tend to look at like the core knowledge, scope and sequence. And I see, okay, this is what they're expected to learn in this grade level in this subject. But there are other resources you can look at. Uh, the archived academic standards in California or Massachusetts, for instance. Uh, prior to Common Core, each state had to develop their own state standards. And at that time, there were states that did very well, states that didn't do so well. California, Massachusetts were two of the states, and a few, just a handful, that, that were considered best in the country. Um, you can access that information at these websites that I've linked you to. You would have to go back to pre-Common Core, which would be two thousand and ten, to look at those archived standards. So, if you don't wanna look at, at the core knowledge, you can look at those, uh, state standards. What were they expecting of their students in those subjects? Uh, Singapore math standards, for instance. Singapore finishes it top internationally. You can go look at their standards. You can read them, what, what should kids know in each grade level in math? Um, homeschool websites. Actually, you'd be surprised how many people go and look at them to say, you know what? My kid needs some help over the summer. Um, I'm gonna go to their website, get a workbook and have them work over the summer. So, it's, it's just a resource for you. So, this, for instance, is a, what you would find on the core knowledge website. In science, what does a student learn in science in first grade? So, you can look at all the topics, you can look at the subtopics. And then it basically says, okay, here's what they should learn. Here, teacher, go do your job. Then, what I, again, I would compare that to what is required for students to learn in Seabrook. And so, you have sun and shadows, earth and space in science, light. So, you've got, this is what was given to me. Or I, or I looked at it based on what was given to me. And then you make that comparison. And I think that's one of the best things that you can do. Teachers do it all the time. Um, school board members can do it. Administrators may be doing it, I don't know. But you have something to compare it to. I would personally have expected administrators to do this for you. I think that this is so important that it should be done. Uh, and then, you know, adjust it every year to you. And maybe it's being done. Again, I'm bringing you some general information. Some of this you may already be doing, some of this maybe not. Um, just, you know, these are, uh, things to consider. I'm also including a link to the testimony that I gave to the State Board of Education on the next generation science standards. It's a more detailed critique of the numerous problems with the NGSS. This is the kind of information I would expect from administrators to give you so that you're fully informed of the numerous problems and then how they've been addressed. I don't have time to go through these links, but again, they're going to be available to, I will make this available to anybody who wants to look at this. Um, and then there's a, a critique by the Fordham Foundation, the disappointing science standards. Again, this is the kind of stuff, if we're putting this into the classroom, um, you might be putting stuff in there that's not setting your classroom or your teachers or your students up for success. This is the kind of information that you need to know about so you can make those comparisons. So, for instance, in that critique, I included a statement by Stan Metzenberg, PhD, professor of biology at California State University, Northridge, who prepared an analysis of the NGSS when they were considered or under consideration in Massachusetts. So, the pre-genominal to grade A and introductory high school courses have significant unacceptable gaps in science content. And again, that's why I say you can make comparisons. Cause if there, if there are gaps in academic science content in the NGSS, I, as a school board member, I as a teacher, I as an administrator, I would want to know what is missing. What, he's, he's gonna ident, or the critiques will identify it for you if you're making a comparison. So, you take the science, what's expected in, um, the core knowledge science, and then you look at what the NGSS requires in that grade level. And then you make that comparison. What he's saying is that there's unacceptable, uh, science content. So, there's things missing. So, what's missing and what has been identified? And then who or how is it being incorporated into the classroom? Does that make sense? What I just pointed, okay. So, the NGSS does not support the stated purposes standards to indicate what students should know and be able to do. Okay? So, let's go to the next. And the next is a, an example from the NGSS, the next generation science standard. So, this is really, I think, a critical area to look at. For instance, the NGSS tells, this is grades three to five. Plan and conduct an investigation. Make observations and or measurements. Ask questions to determine cause and effect relationships. Define a simple design problem that can be solved. Now, look at that compared to, um, the core knowledge. Core knowledge is very defined. The topics are very defined. They're easy to understand. They're easy to follow. They're grade appropriate. So, in, and so in core knowledge, um, and again, I have no association with core knowledge just to make sure everybody's aware, um, introduction to energy. Energy is the ability to change. These are very well-defined topics. And that's what a lot of the critics will say, is that the NGSS leaves a lot of this content out of what should be included in, in, in a set of science standards. And I'll get that, I'll get more to that on the other subjects. But I'm trying to make you see that core knowledge tells you exactly what a student should know by the time they're done with fourth grade in science. But the NGSS doesn't do that in, in a defined way. So, you take the same approach to social studies. Administrator should provide you with a scope and sequence of what is taught in each subject. Compare it to what is required by core knowledge or the other resources. And then what, what do they know? So, I was given by administrators that in social studies, learning about continents and culture, geography, markets, economics, governments, and US symbols, history. That's what I was given, okay? And I would compare that to the core knowledge, what they expect for a grade. World geography, spatial sense, geographical terms and features, Canada. So, you can see all of what is expected for a teacher to teach and a student to learn in that subject. I was also given the, um, social studies C-three framework as, as one of the resources that is used in this, in this school. So, the C-three framework comes from the National Council for Social Studies, or the C-three framework. So, for social studies standards, you can access the standards from this link. Again, providing there was all of the documentation, all of the information. So, you go to the Fordham Institute. This is what is, I think, helpful, is the Fordham Institute was, it was one of the, was, was the, basically, the main organization that graded all of the state standards prior to Common Core. So, they graded California, Massachusetts as the best in the country. And they would grade the other states. And they had a lot of math professors that I've worked with in the past would work on this, and they would grade, um, and so the Fordham Institute wrote this about the Brown Center and the C-three framework. The problem is that the Brown Center team seems to have swallowed the popular view among social studies educators that action civics is what matters, not so much fundamental knowledge. They hail the awful C-three framework of the National Council for Social Studies, which is doing serious damage to the entire social studies curriculum, including history and geography as well as civics. Then they judge state academic standards by their alignment with that framework. How do I go back? Alright, I, you know, you probably wanna sit.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, perfect. So, okay. So, here it says, you know, and again, I link, link it, link it to the document. As I wrote about C-three, three, C-three, when it came out two thousand and thirteen, this three, this framework is inevitably even proudly devoid of all content. Nowhere in its one hundred and eight pages will you find Abraham Lincoln, the Declaration of Independence, Martin Luther King, or Martin Luther, a map of the United States or the concept of supply and demand. You won't find anything that you might think children should actually learn about history, geography, civics, and economics. Instead, we will see something called the inquiry art. And I highlighted that on purpose. Defined as a set of interlocking and mutually supportive ideas that frame the way students learn social studies content. So, again, this is a critique on what the social studies standards are being used in this district. I would want to know, okay, you read the critique. You see that there's prob, how have, how, are these subjects being covered? If they are, show us. I'm not saying that they aren't, but this is the documentation. This is the information I was given. So, I'm just going off of what I was given. And then within, oh, just did it again, sorry. You need to go back, back one. So, within the document, they mention that the pedagogy will be one that is inquiry-based. That's on page six. The standards are dictating how a teacher will teach the content in the classroom. That's what the standards are doing. That's what it says. This is a decision that should always, in my opinion, remain at the local level. What if inquiry-based learning is not working well in the classroom? Teachers need the autonomy to switch up teaching methods. There are many problems with the inquiry approach to learning. Grants also can dictate pedagogy. So, as you're looking at grant applications, you wanna look at that. I provided you a guided, uh, a study that was published in the American Federation of Teachers about how guided instruction is more effective teaching method in the classroom. Do whatever you want in the classroom. I'm just telling you that this is what the teachers put out. Further down in the standards, the students are expected to explain versus in core knowledge, they identify precisely what topics should be taught so that the student learns the content. And content is key. So, I'm gonna give you an example. Many years ago, I was, uh, working with a fourth grader, fourth grader at the time, social studies, and he was learning about the Aztec and Mayans. And as I finished the chapter, got to the end, I looked at the questions that were, that the child was supposed to know, or know the answers to. And there were only like three, and they were all analysis-based. Analyze what happened with the Aztec and Mayans. And I kinda thought to myself, I mean, I find it a little strange that a fourth grader is supposed to analyze, uh, something like that in his history. But then I began asking him, and I said, you know, asking him factual questions about what had happened with the Aztecs and Mayans. And he knew the answers. And I said, well, how do you know the answers? And he said, my teacher gave us a study sheet. And so, the next day, I called, I sent an email to the teacher, and I sent an email to the principal. And I thanked her. And I said, thank you for making sure that he's learning the content. Because analysis is not enough. Analysis, you need to also learn the content. That's the literacy. That's the, um, knowledge. That's what we wanna make sure they know. Then maybe as they get older, they could do more analysis, you know, when, when they have that capacity. So, that's, that's what I wanna show you. And when I wrote the letter to the principal and the, um, the teacher, I pointed it out to the principal. And I said, when it comes time to renew your books, this is something to be aware of. And I felt like that teacher needed, you know, recognition for what she had done to make sure that he was learning that. And I, I'm just hitting these subjects very quickly. And otherwise, I could be here for hours. And I'm gonna guess you guys don't want me here for hours. So, Eureka Two is a math, Common Core math program. There are numerous, numerous problems with Common Core math that should have been explained to you by administrators. Then those deficiencies should have been corrected by any program adopted by this board. I sent you a video of Dr. James Milgram, um, probably a couple of months ago, that showed you how math was taught in Russia versus how it is taught in America, and how confusing and convoluted the Common Core is. And that it's no surprise that sometimes American students are falling behind their top performing countries. By the way, Dr. Milgram was on the, um, the Common Core Validation Committee. And some of these links will take you to his critique. Uh, Stanford math professor. And that he refused to sign off on the Common Core because of the numerous problems. I don't know how I'm doing this. Very sensitive, sorry. So, this is a critique, and again, if you click on it, of Eureka Math versus Singapore Math. Here's some, that's something that jumped out at me. Eureka Math program requires strong reading comprehension for young students to be successful, starting in grade one. Eureka Math relies heavily on students' ability to read because students don't have pictures to aid their understanding of word problems. So, if you recall Dr. Milgram's presentation about what Russian math looks like in the early grades, it's less focused on language and more focused on computation and mathematics, basic math. And they're saying basically that it's, it's completely focused on. I'm not surprised, that's, you know, that's a problem. So, you can have somebody, you can have a, a little child in first grade, second grade, who's got a math, does brilliant math, but if they don't have the communication skills, if they're not reading yet, they may not do well in this program. And they may not do well on standardized tests. Because if they're really focused on something other than math, then they may not be doing well, or may look like they're not doing well. They may be actually brilliant in mathematics. Um, so, you're, um, Eureka Math. This is their learning objective. This is what they put up on their website. Eureka Math helps students understand concepts, procedural skills, how to apply it to solve math problems. But then they also focus on accessibility and social emotional learning in a math program. They also say that the intersection of art and math. Eureka Math squared brings that connection to center stage by featuring a piece of fine art. And let me tell you, I love art. But as a math tutor, I'm still not sure why this is all in math. Again, as Dr. Milgram said, math should be math. Why are we introducing all of this other stuff into a math program? And then, uh, greatminds.org, again, I link you to this, says the student's role is to engage in tasks, activities, and exercises that are intended to develop their mathematical understanding, participate in discussions with diverse groups to explain their thinking. So, again, you're taking more time away from a teacher's ability to teach if all of this is happening in the classroom. Um, I'm gonna give you an example of, of Pinkerton parent who contacted me one day. She had homeschooled her son, K through eight, and he was entering Pinkerton and was in a math class, and said, what is going on? He's working with his partner on a math project, and this is lasting a week and a half. I could have taught him the lesson in three days, we could have moved on. And I said, well, most likely that's competency, he's learning some competency, collaboration. And, but she was able to identify how slow the progress was going because they were bogged down in that class with other activities. So, I'm trying to make that correlation that if you're adding a lot to the plate for teachers to do in the classroom, and like, like what she said, how does this work over? like what she said, how does this work over every week? Is he going to be doing this? How is this going to work over 12 years? We have competencies every year in every class. That's exactly why we have, I think, some of the issues that we have. Is because we are bringing so much into the math class versus math. So Bernie Elementary and hundreds of other Louisiana schools have designated Eureka as their math roadmap. After the State Education Department gave the curriculum high marks in 2013, yet the program has its critics. And I think it helps you read what critics say. It helps you understand where, you know, are there problems? You might say, "No, I don't mind this." But again, you might be saying, "Okay, this is important." The program has its critics, including parents, teachers, and school administrators who lament that it asks too much to students, particularly in the early grades. And I'm going to get to that, how developmentally inappropriate the Common Core math is in the early grades. Its strategies, and again, I highlighted strategies for a reason, have been lambasted as confusing and unnecessary. The St. Anthony Parish School Board has abandoned it altogether, and several other school systems only use it sparingly. I linked the Heckinger Report. And it says, "When we were in school, we didn't learn three different strategies for multiplication. And the parents weren't taught like this." So that's why you have the struggle. Strategies introduces students to confusing math algorithms, and it is not necessary. I was on that math forum for many years with our top mathematicians in this country. And I can tell you, time and time again, they will tell you, this is not necessary to do in a math class. Does Common Core require this? Yeah. But is it necessary to learn math? I mean, a lot of our top mathematicians never learned it this way. They're not doing this in a lot of private schools, and a lot of homeschoolers aren't doing this. But if you're bogged down with teaching these kinds of different algorithms for math, then you are taking, you know, that additional time in the classroom. So, we don't have time, but here's some videos. If you click on the links, it will show you, for instance, the expanded algorithm for multiplication. It shows you the box method for division. So what are the problems that algebra teachers report? And I've heard from many of them. And I am a math tutor, so I've seen them myself. Students may not know basic mathematics because they are so focused on learning different strategies, different ways to multiply, different ways to divide, not just the standard, traditional algorithms. That becomes a problem when they get to algebra. Because anybody who teaches algebra, maybe in here, knows if you have to do the polynomial long division using the standard algorithm. And if a student hasn't mastered that, if they don't know it fluently, if they have not, they do not have that knowledge, and they're using a box method division, they can't do it. Can't do it using some of these other algorithms. So what I hear from students a lot of times, they get to high school, they get to this math, and they, you know, they've learned the box method, or they've learned lattice methods for long divisions. It's long, it's cumbersome, it's not the way you and I learned it. And now they're in high school math, they're embarrassed. I can't tell you what this does to a child's psyche sometime. And I've got algebra teachers going, "Am I supposed to, am I expected to teach them what they should have learned prior to this?" So I want you to be aware of that. Again, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not sure, except of what they're doing. But this is part of Common Core math. Now, maybe they'll be able to come up and clarify some of this, but I just want you to be aware. So there's no good reason to add the different algorithms according, and I can give you a long list of mathematicians that will tell you this. This will mean, this will certainly mean that children need more tutors. I can verify that. I have tutored kids in math many years. Parents will step in to help if they can figure out how to work these math problems themselves. How do parents help their children learn math? It's not always demographics. It's the flaws sometimes in Common Core math. Because I'll have parents that'll tell me, "Well, my husband helps my kid because I don't understand this." Again, this is avoided in private schools and homeschool families. They use traditional algorithms. That's how they teach math. Their children are ready for Algebra I by seventh and eighth grade. And they can then take calculus in high school, which allows them to apply at our top STEM universities. Right now, some of these Seabrook students will not have that afforded to them. Because what that means is if you take Algebra I in ninth grade, the progression is Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus. You have to have completed calculus to apply to top STEM colleges. You have to have completed it. Don't even look at you. So you have to have that before you can even apply to these schools.
Can I ask you a question? So you said you live in the Northampton District. Do they do the same ones as we do, or do they?
I have, coming up at our budget meeting, that's where I'll be asking these questions, yeah. And now that the budget is being proposed, that's what the questions I'm going to be asking. Yeah, I would like to know because I certainly think that a lot of this applies to other districts too. So again, Common Core includes major flaws that need to be identified and corrected. Should Seabrook's parents be required to fix these problems in the curriculum? I don't think so. The problem has to be addressed within the school system. You shouldn't have to rely on parents taking their kids to math tutors to learn real math. So we get to Whit and Wisdom. I'm not sure if you're aware, but parents in Tennessee took Whit and Wisdom to court. And I got to tell you, in 20 years, I have never seen an actual program in our schools be taken to court. So I link you to the actual court documents because I think you should go through it. It's very long, very detailed. But I think it would help you to understand what problems that, obviously, lawyers had an issue with, parents had an issue with, and they took it to court. So, in this article, it says, "Some of the people on both the left and right have claimed that the curriculum teaches students specific ideological positions on race, gender, and adversity." The common complaint wasn't so much about the content. It was just more about when some of these subjects were covered. So it might be too early. Kids might be too young to cover some of these subjects. And again, this is, I'm going to read directly from the lawsuit. This is not my interpretation, but this is what is in the lawsuit. "The grandparents and legal guardians of a second-grade student at Bethesda-Winston Elementary, a multicultural family, wrote to their children's teacher regarding the Module Three and Civil Rights Heroes. They expressed their concern over the underlying narrative being America is racist and white Americans are bad people." This is out of the lawsuit. "They went on to state that they have read ahead, and this theme continues very subtly throughout the entire module. A person could reasonably draw the conclusion that the goal of this module is not to teach the importance of civil rights movement. That was achieved by the efforts of everyday Americans and its leaders, black and white, working together, but rather as a curriculum of shame with intention to sow seeds in divisiveness, discontent, and self-loathing." The teacher that received the complaint agreed with the grandparents and said that these tough topics are a bit much for second graders. So again, this is why they're saying that it's too early. One more part from the lawsuit said, "A mother explained how her eldest daughter was reading racially charged material in her AP English class and coming home questioning her value as a person. She explained that her seven-year-old now suffers from obsessive-compulsive disorder and is under psychological treatment due to the divisive material read in first grade, and how the seven-year-old child's self-esteem has been decimated, and how she thinks she must apologize for having one of these kids." This is out of the lawsuit. So, what, for children reading classical literature, for instance, you can make a comparison, again, I say make a comparison, when you're looking at these programs, when you're looking at standards, when you're looking at things. So children reading classical literature, for instance, helps form their character. It helps children respond to what is good and evil appropriately. Some children may enjoy Captain Underpants, my kids did. But that sort of reading is not feeding a child's mind and imagination well. It is the educational equivalent of feeding children junk food. So this might be okay in smaller businesses. But classical children's literature consists of books and stories that have withstood the test of time. It helps them not only build positive character traits, it will also expand their vocabulary. "Based on what parents have reported in Seabrook, helping children to be honest, compassionate, humble, and show courage could benefit the school community. There's always been a focus on educating children in virtues so that they can find meaning in their lives and develop habits that are helpful to themselves and society." So Charlotte's Love, for instance, Charlotte's Web, for instance, has many themes, including friendship, courage, and self-sacrifice. And again, you may be doing it in the classroom. I'm just bringing this information up to you. Charles Dickens shows kindness and generosity where that can lead. So how does Whit and Wisdom cover grammar? And why did a parent report that her daughter does not know simple sentence structure? I would ask, have you traded the classical approach to learning English language arts focused on quality academic content for a program that has a political bias and includes themes that are not developmentally appropriate for young children? Question two. Sorry, that took so long. These other ones will go quicker. Provide a list of competencies at each grade level for each of those subjects. So, the competencies were on the website. Thank you for the direction to get to them. I did look at them briefly. The fact that they're on the website is great. That's fantastic. I appreciate that they're accessible to everyone. This is something that I think you should be looking at every single year. Look at the competencies. Competencies are required under state statute, but the grading system is not. Competency-based education is workforce training. That's very different from a liberal arts education. You don't have time to go through it, but you need to know that this is workforce training now. It shifts focus away from academics towards workforce skills. So that student in Pinkerton, going into Pinkerton, we're going to work on collaboration skills in the math class. So we're going to, so that the parent could clearly see they're going to have less time working on math and more time collaborating. It slows down learning, which could mean less time to cover the content. There's a misconception that if students pass their competencies, they've mastered the academic content. Go read them. I had John Topkins, math professor, years ago, analyze math competencies in Rochester, Bedford, Lakefield, and what was on the Department of Education website. And basically, what he said was, "If you're using a poor-quality math program, your competencies are going to reflect poor-quality competencies." So, you know, and those kind of things. But again, I'm just trying to point out so that as you go forward, you can make the best decisions. I'm not here to tell you what to do. Do whatever you want. I'm just helping you look at this stuff from a different perspective. Developmentally inappropriate math. Common Core standards can be developmentally inappropriate for young children, for your early grades. So I offer you a link to Dr. Megan Koschnick, PhD, child psychologist. It's 23 minutes long, well worth your effort to watch, especially the teachers who are teaching the young children. She spoke at Notre Dame in South Bend, Indiana, and discussed the destructive implications of Common Core standards and the future of educating America's youth. She identifies that some of the standards are developmentally inappropriate for young children. Some children can overcome these obstacles, but many cannot. Their brain has not developed in areas like abstract thinking. But you will see in her video, she highlights kindergarten students now required to think abstractly in mathematics. She identifies for you which standards are not appropriate for children. Well worth watching. And here is Seabrook's math competencies that are developmentally inappropriate for children. So, Foundations in Math Skills says, "Students will reason abstractly and quantitatively." She actually points to this in her video. Why? Because it's out there. Somebody did a copy and paste job without regard to the cognitive ability of children. So waiting one extra year can have a positive impact on children in the early grades. Whereas this approach can lead children to hating math. I've seen it. Given them problems that are developmentally appropriate builds confidence in the level of learning mathematics. Standards were also pushed down into lower grades, and that wasn't necessary. So I point you back to the California Standards Authority resource. If you pull that up and you go to the first grade, this is, again, considered the best in the country. You go to first grade math in California, and then you pull up the Common Core math standards, you're going to see what was expected in the first grade was pushed into kindergarten. And that is a problem. That is a significant problem. Waiting an extra year till their brain develops can have a better impact. Now you're teaching kids who may understand it better. They're not frustrated, they're not angry because they can't think abstractly. And I know some of the people who worked on those math standards, Dr. Milgram being one of them. Dr. Koschnick explains how you set children up for success in the classroom. "The archived math standards from California and Massachusetts put students on a path similar to what children in high-performing countries experience. It's developmentally appropriate. They are not bogged down learning unnecessary strategies. Concepts build upon each other in a logical manner. Master influency is expected, which makes students prepare for Algebra I by middle school. It builds confidence in students and allows parents to help their children in math." What we know about the Common Core standards writers, "Early childhood teachers and developmental experts were excluded from the K-3 standards writing process. No teachers, no childhood experts, young childhood experts weren't even consulted on writing the standards." "When the standards were first revealed in March of 2010, many early childhood educators and researchers were shocked. The people who wrote these standards do not appear to have any background in child development or early childhood education," wrote Stephanie Feeney of the University of Hawaii. And again, I link all this information for you. Question three. Provide the pedagogy used in each of those subjects at each grade level. The answer was, "Each program has pedagogy embedded in their instructional practices." Please see the programs for more information. So faulty teaching methods can be, can have a really, a real negative used in many classrooms across the country. This is like we saw the fuzzy math back in the 90s. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with what was going on in the 90s. This is really when I made the connection with these math professors because they were analyzing all of these math programs. And so if you're using, or you're pushing, or you're requiring teachers to use faulty teaching methods, that's going to be a problem. Because that's when they come to me. Teach my kid because my teacher won't teach me. Now, is a teacher refusing to teach? Not necessarily. It may be required in those grants. It may be required in some of these things. And they're told, "You've got to use the inquiry method in math." Well, that's a great way to have to pay tutors. Because when I teach a tough child, or any other tutor teaches a child, then they're not going to teach it. So are teachers using project-based learning, where students are forced to collaborate in order to learn the content? This is another fad pushed on teachers as a way to marginalize the importance of a good, quality instructor. I see it all the time. Projects can enhance the learning in the classroom, but as the main method of learning, it has numerous problems. I'm going to give you an example of this again. Another student, seventh grade. Now, he was in a private school. This is what the mom had told me. She goes to open house after a couple months, meets the science teacher, who has amazing passion, who knows her subject. The mom's like, "This is going to be fantastic. This teacher is going to be great for my son." You know, you can see it. You know, when they have a gift like that, you know that she knew that this teacher was going to be fantastic for him. And about two months later, her son comes home and says, "You know, Mom, I'm not learning anything in science." And he's like, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, all we do is projects all day long. We're doing projects, projects, projects. I'm not really learning anything." Here's, you know, named him on his hand how many things he had learned. And so she called the teacher and confirmed this with the teacher the next day, and then called the And then called the principal. The principal said, say no more. It will be gone tomorrow. They literally changed up the three of them. The parent, the teacher, and the principal. And they didn't fire the teacher. In fact, they kept the teacher. And she was amazing after that. After that, after she was given the freedom, you know, that parents in this private school are not going to pay for kids to sit around chitchat with each other. But that's what I mean about pedagogy. If somebody's doing this and the parent's seeing this, this should all be worked out. Parents be conscious that this is what's going on in the classroom. We value our teachers. Let them teach. Because I can tell you, Bill Gates has already come out with an article that it's going to be replaced with by AI. It's already what he said. You just go find it on the internet. And he's the brainchild behind Common Core, the money. So he's already planning on replacing the teachers. So I don't think that's a good idea, me personally. I think I value teachers. I know the quality that they bring to school. Teachers need to know that they are valued, for sure. And curriculum may be one of the most important factors to focus on in the classroom, but teachers are just as important to look at, too. Marginalizing the importance of teachers centered and delivering instruction should be noted. This is a push from an educator reformer's perspective. Marginalize the teacher. Make them a facilitator. Because eventually, again, the push is for AI. The push is for more computerized learning. I see it, I see it. As an education researcher, we see it coming. Now, through electronic, I don't know. But I'm just telling you that that is a push. Students send up sometimes, and in this case, resenting their teachers when the content is not delivered in a logical and thoughtful way. It forces parents to hire tutors who are willing to teach the content. When they are sent to a tutor, students aren't working on projects to learn the content. A tutor is teaching them the content. Students aren't asked to analyze, again, and explain. They are expected to learn and understand. Fads like project-based learning will slow down the learning process again. So you see all of these factors coming in to a math class. Competencies, collaboration, social-emotional learning. We're going to teach you art while you're in math. Those kind of things. If they're doing project-based learning all the time in a class, it's going to slow down the process. So the same is true for inquiry-based, student-centered, birth discovery learning. In many ways, I can see where this has... The reformers that pushed this want to marginalize the tutor. To be honest with you, a lot of it's coming from the tech industry because there aren't kids learning off their computers. They don't want the teachers, you know, necessarily teaching them. So if you're trying to reach proficiency, what is happening in the classroom needs to be scrutinized. I would absolutely agree. Visit the classrooms. I've visited many. I'm happy to join you. I'm happy to have a conversation with any teachers. I'm happy to sit down. I want to hear what's going on. I would say the same thing. Everybody, it's a door. The parents should be going in and looking at us also. Question four, how much time and how many days are dedicated to each subject? I'm going to kind of zip through that one. You can certainly look at that. That was provided to me by the administration. Also, thank you for that. Question five, are tutors available to children who need it in reading and math for each grade levels? The answer was both schools have interventionists who provide support in reading and math according to Title I, the MTS guidelines. So I would want to know, who are the children below proficient? And again, they may have the answers easily available. These are the questions that I would ask if I was in your position. What measures have been put in so that they are receiving the additional instruction? A change in pedagogy or faulty curriculum? And some of these problems can be resolved, as I'm showing you right now. What is the reasoning for not leveling students in middle school? Some of the leveling does occur in middle school primarily. Leveling occurs through the instruction provided by the teacher rather than the assignment of students to classrooms segregated by level of achievement. So I think this deserves a more detailed explanation. An advanced student should have an opportunity to be challenged and move ahead of their peers, especially in math. This happens in private schools all the time. I want to know that any child who has the capability of advancing has the opportunity. That may be done. But again, I would want that detailed information. There's nothing wrong with leveling if it benefits the child and can reduce boredom and behavior problems. But sometimes behavior problems come with that. How many students are fully prepared to complete Algebra I by eighth grade? So seventeen of last year's seventy-fifth, eighth graders successfully completed Algebra I. So this is a key data point that I think we should be asking every single year of every school. Just so you know, I'll be asking in Northampton. It's a key data point. This should be a long-term goal in the district to make sure that the curriculum and pedagogy puts children on a path to Algebra I by eighth grade. Students in high-performing countries are reaching Algebra I by sometime seventh grade or higher achieving students. Sometimes they're reaching it by seventh grade for higher achieving students and certainly by eighth grade for the rest. There's no reason or excuse for this low percentage. I would consider, I would look at the faulty curriculum and the teaching methods as a possible source for this failure. And as I lived in Bedford, from a Bedford School Board member, one-third of the Bedford kids take Algebra I in seventh grade for high school credit. The other two-thirds take it as eighth graders. So basically, 100%. She said, you said just a few of them. The reluctant eighth graders gets split into two pieces. First half in eighth grade, second half is freshmen. So almost all of their students are taking Algebra I by eighth grade. This sets them up for calculus in high school and top engineering, science, and math programs at our top colleges and universities. Why is this not a goal for Seabrook students, all students in SAU 21? Where is the roadmap to achieve this benchmark? Good. Questions that may be easily answered. I'm just bringing them up. Professional development should be critically analyzed annually. Professional development should set our teachers up for success in the classroom. Professional development was focused on academic content when Massachusetts students were finishing at the top in the country. That was pre-C common Core. Massachusetts students were finishing at the top in mathematics, and they could compete with same Core students pre-C common Core. They made sure that teachers knew and understood the academic content, that they were expected to teach. And that's how you set them up for success, which ultimately sets students up for success. Some of the professional development in SAU 21, as I have seen it, and has been presented to me, and I have criticized it. Lack of quality, I'd expect, in a high-performing school. Professional development should not be focused on the political flavor of the day. So what happened, so I'm going to give you another example. I have a young guy that I was talking to about a month ago, who was just hired as a gym teacher in the school district. This guy hired, and then they told him, oh, by the way, we're going to send you and we're going to teach social studies. This, again, is where good professional development can really benefit the teacher. Because here is a kid, well, sorry, a young man off the street, hired as a gym teacher. He was an athletic trainer, things like that. And now he's going to be thrown into a classroom to teach social studies. So professional development, knowing his content, knowing the content that he can bring into his classroom to help students learn that content would certainly benefit him. So I think it's worth looking at professional development. And I'm just about done. This is the law. The law basically says, on number 4, 2018, schools shall ensure that all pupils are performing at the proficient level or above on the state law assessment as established. So if you're looking at, you know, the kids aren't, where they need to be proficient, the law says they're supposed to be proficient. So if you're pushing for that, you're pushing for what's in state law. And finally, the last. These are the details that should also be presented to board members in review. This kind of information will lead you to being able to ask questions that help guide your decisions. You should be provided a detailed plan going forward with all of these areas addressed. This is what I would expect as a board member. Last year, there was a great deal of time spent on Portriva Learner that left out what I consider important role for school in SAU 21. Again, I live in a SAU 21, so I was paying attention. We are spending a lot of money in this district, but just aiming for proficiency is not enough. And I know that's where you're focused right now. And I'm hoping that as I went through this, that it's not just about proficiency, that it needs to be a wider scope. Your student may score proficient on math, but if they're going into Algebra I in ninth grade, they're a year, two years behind our top-performing country. So just, you know, maybe that's the first step, proficiency. But I hope that you'll expand in the future. The reason I wanted to come here was to address the board and to make sure that your goal is not just to meet proficiency, but to make sure that these kids are receiving the best education available to children. Proficiency should be the first step in a long-term goal of excellence. That is what I wanted to present. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I certainly think that hopefully you'll have some additional information coming in on what's actually going on in the classroom. But I wanted you to have this information so as you go forward, you can analyze what's going on in the classroom, what's going on with this program.
And I appreciate you coming because I'm not sure if you're aware, but our board had been speaking for a while about having an outside entity come in and help us. We haven't done that yet. The superintendent suggested it in one form, but it was a different scenario. And we had talked about it, but it cost money. So I appreciate you coming in and giving your time to help guide us. And thank you for all the information.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you listened. And again, all of this may need some additional information. All of this is available to you. I would encourage you to go to the links and really watch them and read them because that will take you even more into them. I'm available anytime. Yeah, I'm happy to. I've gone through schools. I worked with the Diocese on their academic standards two years ago, improving them because this is where they wanted to go. I joined under that effort. And I'm happy to do it. And if people disagree with me, that's okay, too. I mean...
That's life, right?
Yeah. And maybe something's working great in the classroom. Okay. I certainly wouldn't say change, right?
Yeah. Thank you. So thank you very much for taking the time to do this. We appreciate it. And we're going to move on to... Do you mind if we table the minutes for the next meeting when the full board's here?
It's fine with me.
All right, let's table the minutes. Motion to table the minutes, second.
Ray, can you slow down just one minute? Let me get that, please.
Sure. I'm going to, motion to table. John seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the next thing. So we have reports, and we all get to look at those. Is there a little bit? Let each one of you, the superintendent and principals would like to highlight a few pieces for the public. If you want to, it's up to you. I read them, they were pretty packed, full of good stuff. So do you want to start off?
No, I'm fine. I would defer to the principals. I think that's more.
Which one for us? It's up to you.
I'm happy to go quickly. A picture is worth a thousand words. So I have plenty of pictures of our students working hard throughout the month of October. We're supporting our teachers with the new Witten Wisdom curriculum, providing professional development to them. We had somebody by the name of Sarah Sharilla, who came in and modeled lessons, who has experience working with Witten Wisdom, to give our teachers an opportunity to see how they could maybe adapt and make some changes in their classrooms to make that more accessible for their students. And it sounds like that went well. She gave some good feedback and has provided us with resources. And she'll continue to come support us with that throughout the year. We've had three out of six grades already gone on a field trip so far this year, with fourth grade going on one at the end of the week. So there's some photos in there. And I just wanted to say thank you to the fire department and the water department here in Seabrook for the awesome field trip they provided for our second graders who were able to go. And if you take a look at those photos, if they didn't just go get a tour, they got to really be firefighters for the day. And I really appreciate that. So it's pretty much the month of October for you.
I heard good things about the PTL reading as well, the water department. It was really good to see the kids seeing the whole community outside of the school. So, and the pitches were great. So thank you.
Yeah. I'll just plug one more thing. We do a parent-teacher conference is coming up. So your child's teacher will be in touch with you about that. But the date for that is November 5. And then also, if you're not on ParentSquare, please download that. I did put some statistics in my report. Right now, it says we have 31% of parents that have downloaded the app. You don't need the app to get the information. You'll get the information from us based on whatever email and phone number you've provided the school. But there are people we have, I think it says, let's see, 79% are receiving emails and 22% of parents are receiving texts. So if you're not getting information from the school, please reach out and let us help you sign up for ParentSquare.
And, you know, I'm glad you brought that up because I've been getting some feedback, and even myself. So we have PowerSchool. We have ParentSquare. And then we have Google Classroom, right? We have all three. At some point, and this is up to the principals of how we do it, but is there any way? I know that there was something on paper to how parents could sign up and giving them the steps because some of it can be really, really overwhelming. When you're getting three different pieces and you can't really see where, you know, what are we looking for? You know, how's the homework going? For us that are back in the day of, we used to bring the agenda book home and say, oh, and there's the worksheet, that's done, great. I'm one of those. So pencil the paper person. So if you could, I know, I'm pretty sure in the front there was some direction on Parent Square. If we could do something in the form of maybe a video and send it out to the parents, I think it would be helpful. So are we gonna shift and get away from Power School to go just to Parent Square? Or is there a need for both?
Yes, the need for both is that... Power School's a student information system, so that's where all the information lives when you register your child for a school. But there's not a great way to communicate in the same way that Parent Square does. So Parent Square, every way I see it, is it really enhances Power School. But Power School's not a communication software. It's a student information software.
Okay. So if you could help us with that. I think even for me sitting here, I don't know how the other board members feel or parents out there, but it can be really confusing.
Yeah, I think that was our goal with Parent Square was to try to have sort of the one-stop shop. So if there are parents that are struggling to get on Parent Square, if you use the email that you provided the school, that'll be the quickest way for you to get on there. So if you're not sure what that email is, please reach out. We can help you.
Thank you. All right?
Since great, a great time in Ecology School. Mother Nature was very kind to us. I went out and spent a day. So it was nice to watch them going outside with each other and collaborating. We started our first teacher leadership meeting to discuss, we discussed curriculum open house expectations, feedback on the brochure we collected, PD for parents on Parent Square, and update on Whitten Wisdom, which we anticipated doing tonight, but weren't able to. We also had our first crisis team meeting that took place on September the fourteenth. Staff, we debriefed at our school staff meeting with the entire staff on the world of the crisis team, the topics we would cover, how many drills were mandated to do, we're mandated to do eight drills by the state. And then what we would discuss at our meeting will turn key and bring back. We have Alice training coming up. We anticipate that we'll have conversations with students. Potentially other schools in the SAU, I reached out to them. They've done Alice training with their students. It's usually done by the police department. So we're fortunate that we have Officer Keith and then we have one of our EAs. What's that form? Kind of to piggyback on what Tim said, the best picture is a picture of the fifth grader at their first ram rally. Fifth grader is, fifth grade is killing it. We know last year we had like transitional issues. They're doing great. We met with the team today. They have settled in really well. So I appreciate, you know, obviously I appreciate all the parents, but I know it's a hard transition from elementary school to fifth grade. So thank you all those families. And keep continuing to let us know what we can do to make it better for your students. So thanks.
Yes, that sounded great. I just wanted to say one thing about Ecology School. Like this year when the kids left and I took them on and they were all waving, we were leaving, the parents are looking kind of, holding on. We all were guilty of that. But everything I heard in the pictures and the staff that were with them was just unbelievable. And most parents that I've spoke with or family members, it was the first time for a lot of those kids, the first time ever staying anywhere overnight. So it's incredible that they made it through and they had a wonderful time. And I just wanted to thank everybody who was there with them.
Funny story. So I ate dinner with them and one of the boys said to me, hey, Mrs. Slender, could we do like family style at lunch where we have to pass around the food? And I was like, okay. We gotta talk to the lunch. So they liked the fact they had to set the table, clear the table, pass the food around, go up and get the table. So parents, if you heard that, your children...
They're capable, we know.
They've done that, it's a common...
Yeah, I do that at my house.
Good, good, good stuff. Is there anything else?
Curriculum instruction.
Do you wanna, do you have anything on curriculum instruction?
There are reports in there. I don't feel like I need to highlight that. But it seems like we're gonna be doing it at the next meeting when we get to talk about which ones.
Yes, yes, we'll set that up. So we'll put that on the radar also. And let's see. So special services, same thing. It's in the finance report. Anybody have any questions for Matt?
I'll have a, do you have a second?
Okay.
And I have one other one.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in addition to the reports, if you're okay with the reports, great. But we do have, we were notified that we have some PA system repairs and upgrades that are necessary in order to be fully functional in all of our rooms, as well as an outdoor speaker that's broken. So that cost is above the $2,500 threshold. It's gonna be $3,397. So I'm just asking the board for approval to fix, or make those PA fixes and upgrades.
Were you able to find the money for that?
Do we get bids?
Yeah, I mean, we, so... So I spoke, I'm sorry.
Do we do bids on that? Or is it a service we do?
So we don't need to do an RFP. However, we get multiple quotes.
Okay, so good. Okay.
So, and yes, so we, you know, I work with the principals to identify where we could potentially recognize savings. Obviously, we're early in the fiscal year. As you know, we have some budgeted special education expenditures. So we'll, as we go through the year, we'll see where we can recognize savings. And then we also have the special education expendable trust that we could potentially leverage, as well as the, potentially the building maintenance expendable trust. However, that, as you know, we've had to utilize for the boilers. So I prefer not to utilize that trust. So really, we're gonna look at where we can potentially save throughout the school year, and hopefully we'll be able to absorb that cost.
Are the boilers on site?
So the, so yes, the boilers. We, as you know, we went out to bid. That was, that was awarded. So that was, I believe that was Eric Halian on APH doing the install, who we do a lot of work with and we're very comfortable with their work. So, you know, we have additional boilers on the capital improvement plan for future years. But, you know, as of today, you know, you hate to say anything, knock on wood. I think we're in good shape until we get to that point. It was really those two boilers that had reached end of life and we were having those, you know, as you know, they were, they ended, they broke. So they had to stop working, so.
All right, so we need a motion? Oh, Kelly, did you have another question?
No, he's, it's a different thing. It's not related to that, so.
Do we need a motion for that, for that money?
Yes, please.
Okay, so make a motion to have Matt award, was it $3,000?
$3,397. So can I read, can I read the motion back to you?
Sure.
Just so we make sure we get it right. Motion to approve the PA system repairs and upgrades and the amount of $3,397.
Yes. Second?
I'll second.
Ken? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then Kelly, you have a question?
Um, yeah, so we dropped off, I dropped off a book at the SAU 21 on Friday in regards to the budget. And with the motion that the Seabrook School Board dropped the same format and structure line item cost expenses as the time's reasonable budget, I requested the Seabrook School Board be added on each line item the cost from two years prior to the suggested budget request. This will give the school board a baseline to compare the increase through the past years. Also give insight on the percentage of increase for each line item I put in this motion for so that we can better prepare to create an accurate budget for 2025. I also put forth a motion that all revenues be reported as individual line items.
Okay, do we have a second?
Kelly, can you send me all of those motions, please?
I will.
There's no way I'm gonna press it.
Don't you wanna try? Come on, repeat it.
Okay, so who's making the motions?
Kelly, and do we have a second?
Yeah, we'll second.
John, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and anything else for Matt? I just have one thing, Matt. So I wanna, I know there was some dates thrown out. If you could throw a few more different dates out only because I want a full board for the budget. Obviously, Lacey's sick this evening. Believe me, she'd be here. She dragged herself in and Pat had to work. So Tuesday seemed to be a conflict for him. So if we can look at, because a budget review is important for all of us, right? We're all elected, there's five of us. The community expects us all to be eyes and ears on that review.
So we have three budget meetings scheduled. So would you like to add a additional one?
You know, let's, I, if I come on, just send me the dates again.
Yep.
And we'll ask the board to please, sharing whether they can be there or not. And if not, then we'll have to move to do something for a different day. I mean, I don't mean to mention this, but if I have to be the bad one, you know, Saturday mornings at 7:00 AM for a budget review would not be fun. So hopefully everybody can come together and meet either during those times or not because it's important, it's really important review. So, and we're kind of new, some of us, so we wanted to be able to...
I will, I will be happy to accommodate anytime, whether it's Saturday, Sunday, whenever.
I was kidding.
Well, I, you know, if that's the only time that works. We did, I mean, we did schedule these in July or June. So hopefully everyone has it in their calendar. But we can definitely, if it doesn't, we can certainly look at changing the dates.
To me and let me know. And we'll kind of, you know, feel it out because I'm really looking to have a, another meeting before the joint board meeting for the Whitten Wisdom. And hopefully the state results are out so we can share and celebrate. So, okay. I'm good. Matt, anything else?
No, I mean, I'd be happy to adjust the format of the budget book. That's not a problem. And all that information is in the current budget documents. So essentially, we actually provide more than that. So I would essentially just be stripping out a lot of our narrative. And, but yeah, if that's easier for you to analyze, whatever's best for the board, I can take that. How, what are your thoughts on PowerPoint? Would you, do you not want the PowerPoints?
No.
So you just want the book?
Yes, for now. Yeah, if something comes up and things change, we can discuss. But yeah, the book format for now.
Happy to do so. It's easier for me.
Yep, I bet. Times five, right? So I'm good if everybody's good on finance?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm going to board goals also to table them because all five of us are not here. And that's something that we set together and move together on. So I'm gonna motion to table until the next meeting or the meeting after. I'm not sure if the next meeting will just be a forum type meeting. So table. And do I have a second? Kelly, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And ready, and moving on to acceptance of gifts because we love gifts, donations. So acceptance of Seabrook Walmart? Can we do these all together?
We could do that one separately. You could do the CO ones together.
Okay. So acceptance, acceptance, do I have a motion? And a second for the Seabrook Walmart gift?
I'll make the motion to accept the Seabrook Walmart gift and the amount of school supplies donated for a total of $1,464.55. Thank you to April. Kelly, drop them off.
Thank you, April. All right. Second?
Second.
Kelly? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next three are going to be from our wonderful PTO. We're really trying to encourage more people to help them. They need volunteers. They have some really fun things coming up. And we have the dates of all those. But I don't see them on here.
They're on the PTO update. They're on the PTO update.
Yeah, no, I know. We were trying to give them a next repulse for the upcoming events. Do you have them?
The list of events is on here and the PTO update is letter H on the agenda.
Okay, well, do you wanna come on up and share those dates for them? If you don't mind?
We have a couple of dates, you'll come on?
Yeah, come on up to the podium so everybody can hear you.
I didn't see her leave.
Okay.
Casey, I'm on the PTO board.
Casey, what's your last name?
Casham.
Thank you.
I have some updates of upcoming PTO events. We're having our annual trunk or treat Sunday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00. We still have available slots. If there's any community members, businesses, parents, staff who are interested in hosting a trunk. We are revisiting our Monster Bash Sun and Someone special event that will be Saturday, November 2nd. There is a signup genius posted on Facebook. We are looking for some volunteers to help set up the night before and clean up after the event. Those are the next two. We are in the works of, and hopefully this week we'll have a signup genius doing holiday photos again. I think that was very popular last year. Unfortunately, we do not have the truck, but we are working on a festive setup and that should be out by the end of the week. We did have a request slash question based on the donations that you are going to hopefully accept shortly. We were looking for some clarification or possibly revision to the donation policy. It currently is a little bit vague, but states the amount of $500 and doesn't clarify monetary or things. And we were hoping the board would be willing to look at that and just reconsider keeping the monetary donation separate from items donated for approval. We would present, as would Tim or Colleen, but in the moment, as you guys know, there's been some things and trying to get approval ahead of time to, for things that we're trying to give the school has been a little bit difficult.
Yeah.
So we would just ask if you could consider that.
Sure.
Why is it so money?
Yes, yes, because they purchase that.
I mean, typically, like a PTO or an organization will make the donation and then the board will accept it after the fact and that's acceptable via the policy. If that's, so I, so hopefully that wouldn't impede. So you could make the purchase, donate it, and then we'd bring it to the next school board meeting. That's how we typically would...
Especially in an emergency, I'm sorry. Whether some people say it's an emergency or not, but we had the refrigerator and the nurse's office go out. And whether or not there was a need for medication at that time is irrelevant to me, the fact they could be that day. And to me, that was an emergency, just like if the boiler went out. That should be something that is just done. And, you know, like the PTO, and I think Debbie was mentioned too on that. She's not hiding back there. But everybody helped and really, I know you went out and went to stores to get prices. What'd you do?
I just would share what they hoped.
I love it. Well, thank you. And lots of bragging rights with that. And I appreciate you. So if we can get that refrigerator hooked up and going like ASAP, I'd be happy. And we'll work on that policy to fix that because when you give something to the school, I mean, sitting in a storage thing is not cool. So, thank you. And then I wanna also, if you wanna stay up for a minute, and I know some of you may have missed it, but the PTO has, and I'm gonna say it again, purchased all the athletic for every sport for our kids. And it was a lot of money. It was, I believe, $13,000 and maybe more. That's an estimate. Every single kid that plays sports at Seabrook School are gonna have brand new uniforms on. And I'm just so over the moon about that. I think that's wonderful that you all stepped forward and did that. So the high block, thank you.
Rachel definitely did a lot for that, I wish she had to need, but a lot of credit.
Thank you. And the other, let's see, what else we got on here? And supply and money for every grade for field trips. I think that's also a wonderful thing for kids that probably wouldn't be able to go because they didn't have the funds. So appreciate it, whatever they use it for. And you need a motion for all three of these. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept all three of the PTO donations. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you again.
Casey, did you say the holiday photo? Did you, I didn't get it. Did you guys put down a date or are you looking for it?
Uh, yes. It is Sunday, November 3rd. And the signup genius should be out hopefully tomorrow.
Okay.
Don't pull me on that.
And the kids for the trick or treat, too. We'll bring that up for the trunk or treat. The date again on that was?
Uh, the 27th.
And it was, and it's the time?
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00, everybody from the kids because it's an awesome...
Here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on. So we have policies. Okay, so we are moving on, so we have policies, the PT, do you need the PTO update still, or can we take that off? Are we good?
That was good.
Are we good, with the PTO? Okay, all right. Um, so, let's see, do we want to?
Policy is just a first read, so.
No.
It says first read, no?
I know, but I haven't watched.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I just, um, go ahead.
No, do you wanna do something else?
No, I just, I, we have had parents request to meet with the board, and we were a little bit, um, questionable, I didn't know if anybody was here to meet with the board in non-public, 'cause I don't know by face, just by name. Is anybody here looking to meet with the board in non-public? You, it's okay, is, okay, all right, I just wanted to see if you were here, and I'm only asking 'cause it's getting late and you're probably waiting. Um, so...
Huh? Whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, so, the superintendent has, um, suggested that the board not meet because policy has not been followed. Um, I reached out and asked the parents, obviously, have you met with A, B, C, D? Well, we spoke with us, and so, for me as a board member, if we have to waive that policy tonight to hear the parents, I'm okay with that. Um, I never wanna be the board member that says, "I'm not gonna hear you." Now, whether we can do anything is one thing, but hearing you with the parent situation with your child, um, I don't wanna, um, be that, so I'm leaving it up to you two what you wanna do, and I'll do whatever.
What about the people who had public comment? 'Cause, so now we have to make appointments to have a conversation, 'cause there were people who asked to speak.
No, it's not to do with public comment, it's personal.
I understand that.
But no, and we can actually, when we come out, we can decide whether to extend that or not as a board.
But what I'm asking is, so in order for those parents to speak to you, they should, they're better off to make an appointment in the middle of a public board meeting versus having public comment.
No. No.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, well, it's not, and it's personal, it's things we cannot discuss.
I'm not, I don't wanna discuss it, I'm just saying, for the people who came to speak a public comment, you shut them down early because you had a guest speaker, and then you're gonna talk.
That was planned, that was planned. Yeah, so, we don't know that yet, we'll decide when we come out. We did public comment by policy the way that we have to.
Can we decide that, 'cause we have child care and things, so if you're gonna open a hall, I need to know these things.
I don't know that yet, it depends on, if we get out of non-public at ten o'clock at night, I don't wanna say that.
You changed the public comment policy to be five minutes, and then be everyone could give their five minutes, and then now you're changing it again.
No, we didn't, Chris, I mean, if you wanna speak, I'll, I'll acknowledge you guys, but it's not right now, we're gonna move on with the business meeting, we'd like you to talk. Okay, so we're gonna move on, um, with the, um, non-public. Is that what you girls wanna do, or do you wanna go through the policy?
So indeed, I did go through the policy, it does say, "The person making the complaint believes that a satisfactory reply has not been received from the superintendent, or he or she may invoke the evidence, request that the board hear a complaint, the board will hear and act upon the complaint when we buy a majority vote. The board may decline any complaint which is, in its own judgment, would interfere with the superintendent's ability to properly administer the district. If the board does not, does hear upon the complaint, all board decisions shall be final." So it says, "If the person making the complaint believes that a satisfactory reply has not been received from the superintendent, he or she may request to meet with the board."
Okay. So we are gonna have a motion to go in the non-public, we're gonna move, you guys can stay in here comfortable. We're gonna go in the conference room, um, so that you don't have to get up and stand in the hall for hours on end.
What is the letter that you're meeting under?
We haven't got to that yet, yeah, can you wait one second?
Okay, 'cause that's gonna be the motion for the non-public.
Right, so, um, let me see.
Let me hold on.
Um, so what do you want to be, what letters are we gonna use? Meredith, can you read that?
Uh, I don't know.
Is it A? It's A through M, which ones?
Oh, I don't have it, I'll show you. Well, yeah. Again, I'm not privy to all the details, but I would assume you're saying it's...
Well, the detail you know is student issues have to be, yeah.
Well, it, it could be A if it's pertaining to a complaint about an employee, the employee has the right to be there.
Yeah.
And then it would be C if it's to protect the reputation of someone other than a member of the board.
So I would say C. And, um, we're gonna be reviewing some things also. Um, not sure how that goes, so, let's see.
So just for public clarification, I'm sorry.
Can we finish, please? Meredith, could you read what the choices are?
I can't right now because my screen isn't functioning, but I...
My, my computer is acting funky too, too, my Word docs.
Oh, no, well, who knows? In and out. I just wanna make sure we have them all, 'cause, 'cause we may go in for a few different things. So, um...
I have A through M.
I think, I, I mean, that's...
I have a hard copy of them.
Thank you so much.
Nine, one, A, nine, one, three, two, A through M.
Okay, you have to be specific.
I know, but I'm trying to look for that one, and then...
A is dismissal, promotion, or compensation, or disciplining of an employee, or investigation of charges against him or her, unless the employee affected has a right to a public meeting and requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B is hiring, C is matters which have discussed in public would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, unless such person requests an open meeting. D is real estate, E is negotiation or, um, litigation, which has been threatened in writing or filed by or against the board or any subdivision thereof. I is matters pertaining to carrying out emergency functions. K is a pupil tuition contract, like if you were tuitioning your students to another district. Uh, I is legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally. Um, and M is consideration of whether to disclose minutes of a non-public session.
So that would be C. We're done. Under C.
If you wanted to do A too, that's under personnel. That's the same thing.
To be saved, yeah. So we can do A and C. Okay. Okay, so we are...
So you're meeting under C?
A and C.
A and C, and we're gonna need on roll call motions, yeah?
Um, I can let you read this. A is an extended lead request.
Correct.
That's C.
What? So it falls under C as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move...
Complaints about employees would fall under A.
Forward to A, well, hopefully we don't need that.
No, we're looking at the number of the law.
Yeah, so do you wanna just say, Jen?
It's a motion for a roll call to enter into non-public session under R S A ninety-one, A, that's three, two, A and C, at six forty, just C.
Just C.
Just C, sorry, yeah. At six forty, forty, six forty-four P M, who's making the motion? I will. And second?
Second.
And Jen? Yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
You are now in non-public.
And everybody gets a bathroom break. So go first.
Yep.
To end non-public session and resume public meeting at 7:51 PM. Who's gonna make the motion?
I will.
Second?
Second.
And Jen?
Yes?
Kelly?
I have them, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
All right, we are back.
We are back.
And before we get out of this, could I ask who's going to send me the minutes for the non-public? Kelly. Kelly?
Yep. All right. What's the next one? Policies on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Policies.
All right, so I'm gonna start off with the issue that the policy that is about school board governance and operations, the first. And I'm gonna make a motion that will change that policy, and it does have the visits to the school in there. So that will be changed as well, and I'll read to you right now what it says for visits to the school. Individual board members interested in visiting the school or classrooms will inform the superintendent of such visits and make arrangements for visitation through the principals and the various schools. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in the school affairs and will not as inspections or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Official visits by the board members will be carried on only under board authorization and with the knowledge of the superintendent and principal. So I'm gonna make a motion that will change on this policy. The policy also states that staff communication to the board, all communications or reports to the board or any other board committee from principals, supervisors, teachers, or other employee members, it says "shall" be submitted through the superintendent. I am changing that to, and I'll go back through and read what they're gonna say. The board communication to staff, that can stay the same, the visits will not be under change. Social interactions, it says staff and board members should have keen interest in the school and in education generally, and it is expected that when they meet at social affairs and other functions, they will informally discuss such matters as education trends, issues, and innovations of general district problems. However, employees are reminded that the individual board members have no authority except when they are convened at a local meeting, legal meeting, of the board vested with special authority by board action. And then it says therefore discussions of personalities or personal grievances by either party will be considered unethical conduct. So the staff communication, it's gonna change to "all communicate," and this is policy BHC.
BHC?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So is the board waiving its policy on policy development?
Yep, no, we're going, we're changing that one too. Do you want me to do that one first?
Well, it says that policies will generally have a first read unless there's an emergency. Right, I'm summarizing, but that's the point, so you either need to waive that or change that.
Okay, we'll change, we'll waive that for tonight.
Yep.
So make a motion to waive.
Make a motion to waive.
The policy now, can you say the number?
Uh, B-G-A-A.
B-G-A-A? Motion to waive.
Motion to waive.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Uh, we favor.
All right, so all communications and reports to the board or any board committee from principals, supervisors, teachers, or other employees, it says "shall," but it's gonna say may be submitted through the superintendent, no, sorry, shall be, yeah, may be submitted through the superintendent. If at any time this is a concern to the submitter, it may be submitted to the board, whom will share with the superintendent if decided by the board. So other words, if the staff wants to reach out to the board, they can do it through the superintendent or they can reach out, it said, if at any time this, there's a concern. So other words, if the person does not feel comfortable submitting to the superintendent, that they can submit to the board.
Can you send me that motion, just so I have the full verbiage?
Yes. The visits to the school, it'll be individual board members interested in visiting the school or classrooms will check in the front office. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in the school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory and administrative purposes. And that's the change to that, those policies. So other words, instead of going through the superintendent, making an appointment, getting the principal to approve it, we're gonna check in at the front office, they're gonna know we're there and that we can visit.
Go to the classroom.
Yep, 'cause that's a desire for everyone, so that's what we're gonna do.
So you should, can you clarify that? So you're just gonna like say you wanna get up on Friday, you're just gonna show up on Friday, you're gonna check in with Heather, and then you're gonna walk through?
Yep. I mean, it should, there's nothing, no concerns. I mean, that's what, that's what they don't want from us, and that's what they don't seem to be concerned with.
I just asked for clarification.
Yeah, I just, we're doing what the teachers want, so.
If Rebecca sends us an invite, just say for instance, hey, we'd like you to come in, we have this going on in the classroom, can you come in? And now we can come in because policy's gonna say it prior to, I don't know what happened, I'm assuming. I've seen board members said they've been in classrooms a lot. I've never done that, unless it was an apparent situation.
It's always been the option for the school.
But now it's gonna be by policy, so everybody's protected.
You always have an open invite.
Right.
Yeah, we do now, because of the policy, and we couldn't because.
Yeah, there were some things going on, we'll explain in a little bit later.
The policy was just to inform the principals, but you could bypass that.
And the superintendent?
Yeah, you would notify, but you're making arrangements through the principals, not through the superintendent.
Or through the teacher, 'cause they like to email us, too, and we gotta make sure it's okay.
Um, all right, so.
It's called B-G-A-A.
No, it says BHC.
The one I just read is BHC.
Yep.
Okay, so that's my motion, and I'll second.
Okay. Yes, I'll second.
Okay.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry if it's a little lengthy, but it's something we need to catch up with, but we have not had the time to do, and it's important.
Okay, this one. The next one is C-H-B. School Board Reviewer Regulations, it says, when a written procedure is developed, and I'll explain a minute why I'm referring to this one. The superintendent shall submit to the board for informational item. Such procedures need to not be approved by the board. Therefore, they may be revised when it appears they are not consistent with board policy. On controversial topics, the superintendent may request prior board approval. So I'm gonna read an email that came to you, came to us this week.
Kelly, what policy was that that you're referring to?
Um, the one I just read was C-H-B.
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 Yep.
To end non-public session and resume public meeting at 7:51 PM. Who's gonna make the motion?
I will.
Second?
Second.
And Jen?
Yes?
Yes.
I have them, yeah, thank you. Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
All right, we are back.
We are back.
And before we get out of this, could I ask who's going to send me the minutes for the non-public?
Kelly.
Kelly?
All right. What's the next one? Policies on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Policies.
All right, so I'm gonna start off with the issue that, the policy that is about school board governance and operations, the first. And I'm gonna make a motion that will change that policy, and it does have the visits to the school in there. So that will be changed as well, and I'll read to you right now what it says for visits to the school. Individual board members interested in visiting the school or classrooms will inform the superintendent of such visits and make arrangements for visitation through the principals and the various schools. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in the school affairs and will not as inspections or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Official visits by the board members will be carried on only under board authorization and with the knowledge of the superintendent and principal. So I'm gonna make a motion that will change on this policy. The policy also states that staff communication to the board, all communications or reports to the board or any other board committee from principals, supervisors, teachers, or other employee members, it says "shall" be submitted through the superintendent. I am changing that to, and I'll go back through and read what they're gonna say. The board communication to staff, that can stay the same, the visits will not be under change. Social interactions, it says staff and board members should have keen interest in the school and in education generally, and it is expected that when they meet at social affairs and other functions, they will informally discuss such matters as education trends, issues, and innovations or general district problems. However, employees are reminded that the individual board members have no authority except when they are convened at a local meeting, legal meeting, of the board vested with special authority by board action. And then it says therefore discussions of personalities or personal grievances by either party will be considered unethical conduct. So the staff communication, it's gonna change to "all communicate," and this is policy BHC.
BHC?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
I can read them.
Okay, so.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So is the board waiving its policy on policy development?
Yep, no, we're going, we're changing that one too. Do you want me to do that one first?
Well, it says that policies will generally have a first read unless there's an emergency. Right, I'm summarizing, but that's the point, so you either need to waive that or change that.
Okay, we'll change, we'll waive that for tonight.
Yep.
So make a motion to waive.
I make a motion to waive.
The policy now, can you say the number?
Uh, B-G-A-A.
B-G-A-A? Motion to waive.
Motion to waive, B-G-A-A?
Yes. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Uh, we favor?
Aye. All right, so all communications and reports to the board or any board committee from principals, supervisors, teachers, or other employees, it says "shall," but it's gonna say may be submitted through the superintendent, no, I'm sorry, shall be, yeah, may be submitted through the superintendent. If at any time this is a concern to the submitter, it may be submitted to the board, whom will share with the superintendent if decided by the board. So other words, if the staff wants to reach out to the board, they can do it through the superintendent or they can reach out, it said, if at any time this, there's a concern. So other words, if the person does not feel comfortable submitting to the superintendent, that they can submit to the board.
Can you send me that motion, just so I have the full verbiage?
The visits to the school, it'll be individual board members interested in visiting the school and classrooms will check in the front office. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in the school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory and administrative purposes. And that's the change to that, those policies. So other words, instead of going through the superintendent, making an appointment, getting the principal to approve it, we're gonna check in at the front office, they're gonna know we're there and that we can visit.
Go to the classrooms.
Yep, 'cause that's a desire for everyone, so that's what we're gonna do.
So you should. Can you clarify that? So you're just gonna like say you wanna get up on Friday, you're just gonna show up on Friday, and you're gonna check in with Heather, and then you're gonna walk through?
Yep. I mean, it should, and there's nothing, no concerns. I mean, that's what, that's what they don't want from us, and that's what they don't seem to be concerned with.
I just asked for clarification.
Yeah, I just, we're doing what the teachers want, so.
If Rebecca sends us an invite, just say for instance, hey, we'd like you to come in, we have this going on in the classroom, can you come in? And now we can come in because policy's gonna say it prior to, I don't know what happened, I'm assuming. I've seen board members said they've been in classrooms a lot. I've never done that, unless it was an apparent situation. But now it's gonna be by policy, so everybody's protected.
You always have an open invite.
Right.
Yeah, we do now, because of the policy, and we couldn't because.
Yeah, there was some things going on, we'll explain in a little bit later.
The policy was just to inform the principals, but you could bypass that.
And the superintendent?
Yeah, you would notify, but you're making arrangements through the principals, not through the superintendent.
Or through the teacher, 'cause they like to email us too, and we gotta make sure it's okay.
Um, all right, so.
It's called B-G-A-A.
Yeah.
No, it says BHC.
BHC.
The one I just read is BHC.
Yep.
Okay, so that's my motion, and I'll second.
Okay. Yes, I'll second.
Okay.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry if it's a little lengthy, but it's stuff we need to catch up with, but we have not had the time to do, and it's important.
Okay, this one. The next one is CHB. School Board Reviewer Regulations, it says, when a written procedure is developed, and I'll explain a minute why I'm referring to this one. The superintendent shall submit to the board for informational item. Such procedures need to not be approved by the board. Therefore, they may be revised when it appears they are not consistent with board policy. On controversial topics, the superintendent may request prior board approval. So I'm gonna read an email that came to you, came to us this week.
Kelly, what policy was that that you're referring to?
Um, the one I just read was C-H-B. C-H-B. So I'm assuming that, the one that was, um, the one that was, I'll put, I'll just pull it up on my phone because I thought you saved it. We received an email, so I'm assuming that's considered a, um, procedure because it changes.
Everything.
Everything. Communication, phone, I know the protocol, just gotta make it every way. Dear Seabrook School Board members, I spent a great deal of time of, this is from Meredith, sorry. Um, I spent a great deal of time over the last few weeks meeting and speaking with your school administrators about communication from board members. Emails from board members have continued to be a significant disruption in interference with day-to-day work of the administrators and staff, I don't know who has email staff, within both the Seabrook schools and the S A U office. In the thirty-day period between August twenty-seventh and September twenty-sixth, I personally received or copied on a hundred and sixteen emails from board members of the Seabrook school. I want to remind you, there's, there, there was emails that were sent that other schools probably are not doing, dealing with. This does not include emails pertaining, pertaining to the withdrawal study committee nor does it include additional emails on which I was not copied that were sent directly to building and district administrators, so they weren't sent to her, they were sent to others, and to building and S A U staff by individual board members making requests for information or directing these individuals to take action. In order to protect the time administrations and staff to do their job, staff, again, don't recall, know anyone who's, you know, staff? Am I wrong? I thought I know. I have taken the following steps. All communications from the board members should come through me unless it's being sent, received in your role as a parent or guardian. Messages sent to other administrators slash staff and not copied to me will be forwarded to me for response. So other words, I'm wondering if the staff was notified of this, if they were, I'm not sure. Given the volume of emails sent by the members in the Seabrook school board and the impact to the work of the district, except in case of emergencies, I will be further limiting my responses to emails from the Seabrook school board members to limited hours on Monday and Thursday. I remind you that the individual board members have no authority to direct the actions of the superintendent or other staff as provided in state statute, and it goes on to say how one school board member cannot make a request or speak amongst the whole, for the whole board. As I previously shared, continued discussions about board matters via email, text, social media, phone calls, et cetera, violate R S A ninety-one A, if an individual board member wishes to discuss a matter on which falls under the board's purview, they, their items should be added to the agenda for public or, if permissible, non-public discussion, written confidential in the section plan of the email does not protect that email from disclosure unless contents of the email fall under the provisions of R S A ninety-one. So because of that email, it states that if procedure does not appear to be consistent with board policy, then superintendent may request prior board approval. So basically, that does not, is not consistent with policies because the policies that we have here state for B D D superintendent, uh, school board superintendent relationship. The board believes that policymaking is a primary function of the Seabrook school board and that the execution of those policies is a primary function of the superintendent. Delegation of the board of its executive powers to the superintendent provides freedom for the superintendent to manage the schools with the school board's policies and frees the board to develop in time policymaking and appraisal functions. The superintendent is responsible for administration of board policies and execute, execution of board decisions, the operation of school programs for keeping the board informed about school operations and issues, which we have not been kept informed. So to that policy, I'm gonna add, an effort to keep the board informed, the superintendent will notify the board chairman as promptly as possible of any happenings of an emergency nature of which is occurring in our school, 'cause we've had them and we haven't been notified. In consultation with, consultation with the board chairman, the superintendent will follow forward necessary information to other board members and committees. So that is the policy, C H B, oh, sorry, B D D.
Do we have a motion? Is that?
I made a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, um. I don't know if this is one of the ones on the first.
Can you wait for a minute, 'cause I just wanted to, um, comment on the one that, um.
I, I know, I. Can I get some clarification about that?
Could you clarify emergency, please, before we, please?
Yeah, so I, I was gonna say that too, that we can add it for more clarification, but I wanna do that when the, I mean, we're gonna pass it, we're gonna move it.
Okay, what clarification?
But when the other board members are here, we'll have more clarification.
'Cause I think everybody determines emergencies differently, right?
Yeah, so, um, my, my theory is, and I've said this before, when in doubt, send it. I mean, and that's the thing, I don't wanna, we don't wanna be surprised. I don't wanna read things happening.
But because it's posted on Facebook, doesn't necessarily make it an emergency.
Right, it doesn't.
An emergency.
Excuse me, um, Meredith, can you finish, please, I'm sorry, I was addressing, um, Ms. Lennon. Um, so, you know, I, we don't wanna, no, we don't wanna hear things out in the community that have happened that are in the school, 'cause people address it in the middle of a supermarket, and we're standing there going, oh no, we didn't, oh no, and then we're really trying to keep the straight face of, wow. And so surprises, I think, and you would expect the same thing, no surprises. And that's all, whatever can help us start to work in that direction of transparency, no surprises, nothing on you, nothing on us, we all know, we're aware, and we move forward for what's best for the kids. So with that said, on, um.
I definitely think there needs to be clarification on what, you determined to be surprising.
Well, the board, and we're working with you.
And, yeah, you, when I say you, I mean you plural.
Yeah, and you.
And what we determined to be surprising, right?
Um, so I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
We try to hide it, yeah.
All of us, no, and.
So the email that we received, um, I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna accept that as my.
Yeah, and that's what I was wanting to finish up on.
We're just not emails.
So when that email came out, I was confused to whether or not we could even hear from staff tonight. I didn't know if you were aware. Were any of you aware of this? Um, I almost wanna call it gag order, 'cause I feel like it is, I feel like it really divides and takes us all away from each other even further, which is not good.
It sounds like a boss messaging.
So, on that.
Do you want an answer to your question?
No, I was talking to the staff, um, Meredith, so I wanted to say one thing though to Ms., Mr. Perara. That's gonna be difficult to follow for me as a board member coming budget season. If I can't, um, send to you at least a list of things that I'm gonna be looking for, for documentation moving into this very, very busy, important season, 'cause two of the most important things, right, is to the community, is their children and their money. So if I can't say, hey, Matt, and it could be something simple, like, hey, do you have this, this line? Can I get a little more clarification next time we meet, bring it with you, whatever? It's gonna be difficult for us to do one of the main functions that we are to do, and that's budget, right? So I don't know if you, how you feel about it, but for me to have to send it, or, or the board to send to Meredith, who then has to go to you to get the answer, to come back to Meredith, and then Meredith comes back to us, and it's not really the clarification we were looking for. Instead of, we're all sitting in the room, you bring it, you share it, you send it, we have it. I mean, I don't know how we're gonna make that work, so no, I'm not accepting that narrative, and I'm telling you now. I want open communication and transparency. If, um, I didn't miss that one, but if she wants to email and say, hey, I'm looking for a couple of parents, it's fantastic science, things happened, or somebody in your wing, can you come and see this? I don't want her to feel like she can't do that, and I don't wanna feel like I can't answer to that. So we've, that's why we're making these changes. And that is why we're not gonna adhere to that letter, because that's, that's more divide.
So I think, I think you also should honor the perspective of your administrators who are overwhelmed by the demands of this board and who are wasting valuable time that should be spent attending to the needs of students and supporting faculty in trying to address those needs. It has bogged them down, it is causing stress, it's keeping people awake at night, it is causing health issues for our administrators. Like, this, this is a responsibility that belongs to this board, and my job is to make sure that this district can function. And it can't function with a hundred and sixteen emails coming from board members, individual board members asking for information that is not discussed by a board at a meeting. We are very responsive to this board.
Yeah.
Right, we are, we are responding to emails constantly, but it is getting in the way of the work. And if you want student outcomes to, to improve, then you've gotta let your administrators do their jobs as administrators. And that includes people in the central office who have other districts to support. My job as the superintendent, not all of these people report to me, directly or indirectly, they report to me. I'm the only one that reports to this board.
You don't, oh really, you report to the joint board, not to all of them.
That's true, and I report, report to the Seabrook board as well.
The twenty-three board members, and it makes it difficult. So back on that note, Meredith, to you, I would, um, say that I agree a hundred percent. What I have to say to you is coming on this board in March, I had no idea of all the things that needed to be addressed. It was really, I mean, fourteen years' experience, never seen anything like it, and it may be little things, it made them big things, it still may be big things. And I, this board has spent, what, nineteen meetings are we into now?
So have the administrators.
Trying to do, to do, and you have, and trying to do everything we can to make this all gel and work together.
And your administrators are not gonna last, Maria, if you continue in this case.
And, no, that's what we're here. You, uh, the board probably isn't either, I mean, look at us tonight, we've got three people here. I mean, it's difficult on that. And some of the board members, Kelly, Gracie, the meetings that they have attended for that withdrawal committee, with the withdrawal committee, I, I'm telling you, they put in so much time, and they work too, they have kids, they have families. So we all understand, we get it, we've gotta make things better, and we believe we will.
Maria, do you wanna stop, like, Christina finished her, she was just here again. Your mom's talking, do you wanna come up here and tell me?
No, I, I, I would love to, but you're already, well, you're already cutting off a third one.
I want, I want you to, because all I can hear is you over there, as much as you say we're rude, you're being very disrespectful.
Can you? Yeah. Can you just keep it down?
So he wanted to come up here. I, I, I just, I can't sit, I, it's incredibly.
So they can hear us.
Go ahead.
Well. I, I mean, I would love to, I, I.
Go ahead, go ahead, because people are all, you think that.
I'm gonna reopen the public comment.
We gotta open public comment, Kelly, if we do it, 'cause everybody else is waiting too.
Because my phone's already pulling up on how you think that you did such a great job, and they would love to see you right there.
So, so wait a minute, first, we have to have a vote to open public comment because we have other people that wanna be heard. So that, it has to be agreed with the board first of all.
What?
It, we would have to open public comment, 'cause there's other people that want to be heard.
But we can't do policies if I have someone over there talking.
I will control that from here, I will not allow it.
You do what you wanna do, just tell them.
So I want everybody to, please, let us have the business meeting, take a seat, quiet down, so everybody can hear everybody.
So you don't want me to talk?
No, there is no public comment at this moment.
But you did cut me off the first time.
Okay, well, you cut off again sadly, 'cause it's not in order.
It's amazing how these, these meetings can be so different when someone else is with you.
It's not policy. So go ahead and sit down, and please, everybody, let us get through this business, business end of it so that we can at least get through our policies and move through our agenda, and then we'll see what we have left of time, okay?
So what policy are you talking about, just so I can do clear? 'Cause quite honestly, getting like sixteen emails from August twenty-seventh until sometime September asking about advisory, family council, who's the A D, who their coach is, that's a lot. 'Cause that's a lot.
Are you ready for me?
It is, and that's, we need to fix that.
No one's, no one's trying to, no one's trying to prevent you from providing information, but if you task, and I'm gonna speak for myself.
Yeah, no.
If you're tasking me to, to change things for students at this school, some of the requests, requests, quite honestly, are, are, are time consuming. You want me to, every program, how much it costs, that's why we have a budget book. Obviously due diligence, you wanna look at every line of budget, as do we. So we have multiple things having, not once have I ever told anyone standing over there not to talk to you.
No, no.
Let me be real clear on that.
No, I know you wanna.
'Cause when you say gag order, I've never, and, and I don't wanna get up.
So.
Uh, there was people that wanted to meet, but they were told that probably, I'm not sure you can do that.
I've never said that.
I've said. Okay, I've sent him one email since his hiring.
What I said is, is, come to the board meeting, get up and speak. They wanna hear what you have to say, that's why they come, they wanna hear what you have to say. You're the ones doing the work, okay? I'm trying to guide in that work. They wanna hear what you have to say, that's why they've invited you into classrooms. That's why Hannah Pollock said, come on in, come watch me teach math. Not as in, like, you're evaluating her, she wants you to see, what is math, what is eureka squared in other math looks like? What is Rebecca Sherburne doing with the, the book that she's reading with her kids right now? That's an invitation, so you can see the work that actually goes on. But when you get, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen emails, like, bing, 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 it's just kind of, I'm confused about the role, like, I thought the role was policy and budget. So when someone says, I, I, why are you having family council? Because I want parents to come in and find out what's going on, so we can talk around the table. I'm trying to circumvent anything you do or change anything that the board does or change anything the P T O. I'm trying to bring people around the table to change the trajectory for the kids here. And the P T O has, how many people come to their meeting, five, six? They can't do that alone, we cannot do this work alone.
No.
So I'm not, I'm not.
So I respectfully request, when you talk about your goal of communicating, that is a two-way street, I'm always gonna communicate with you, but I'm also trying to run a school.
Yeah, well, we didn't want you to be in trouble either with that letter that came out, it wasn't from you.
What trouble?
You know, if you're not supposed to be talking, or we're not supposed to be talking, so we had to clarify that tonight.
The board policy says that the superintendent is a conduit for communication with us. That's what I read.
Right.
Not you send me, you plural, fourteen emails, and I'm like, I can't even keep track of it.
Well, that's why we just changed it.
And the chain is just like, it goes on, 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 on.
I know, I don't like that, the, I know what you mean, twenty later, I get it.
We're trying to change, we're trying to change the academic trajectory for your children.
I don't, I was struck about someone asking something to me else.
And all the people sitting here.
Well, you know, there are times that.
Well, that's the word, do we, do I care if you questioned or asked about that? No, Kelly asked, hey, if you ask the interventionists how they feel about advisory? Great suggestion. I asked the interventionists, do you wanna teach a group during advisory? Yes. You said to us, not every school in the S A U, 'cause we always talk about the other schools, has advisory every day. What do we do? We change that. We change advise, we were looking at goal setting, we're looking at teaching. So we change what it looks like, we told you that last week, three days we did.
It's too academic, right? What is that?
Well, so we have goal setting on either end, when you talk about goal, what are you, what are you working on, et cetera, et cetera. Teachers, mission, kid to kid comes. Based on your suggestion to us.
Yeah.
You asked us to talk about wit and wisdom at every monthly meeting, because it's a pilot, and it was three, two, three of you said, yeah, let's try it, two of you said, no, I respect that. But if you wanna know what's really happening, you needed to allow the people to get up there and say.
They're going to.
Hey, this is really hard, it's, and, and they're gonna tell you that, this is not easy, this is hard, it's hard for our kids, it's hard for the teachers.
Yeah.
Kids are catching on, kids aren't catching on, what are we gonna do about that? So that's the kind of communication that I'm hoping that we can have moving forward, 'cause this is exhausting.
Yeah, we know, all of us.
I know, for everybody.
It is, and we've gotta change that.
But Colleen, you know, in all the emails where we're trying to get information from the superintendent, it's like butting heads. It's like literally butting heads.
I can't, I can't, I can't speak to that.
You don't have to, I'm telling you that it's like butting heads. And nothing, anything we ask for is an argument. And if we come here and we ask questions, and I'm not saying only you, the first thing I feel like everyone does is look at Meredith, like, like, is it okay to speak? And if, and if someone starts to speak up, and I won't, I can tell you a situation right now that I remember, like, it happened yesterday. There was somebody up there discussing the curriculum, and she started to discuss something, and the minute we asked her a question, she looked right at Meredith, Meredith continued her answer, and she wouldn't say another word. And it's like, can't these people speak for themselves? And that's, that's, that's our concern, is that nobody feels like they can answer us without checking in to see if what they're saying is okay. As far as I'm concerned, if, if somebody, and I'm not talking about you in general, saying, I am anybody, if someone asks me a question, I'm not gonna look at someone else to see what the answer is if I'm telling the truth. If no one has anything to hide, then there's no reason to look at other people when you make an answer. There's no reason for, you know, the email to be forwarded to the superintendent to be answered when it's an email that clearly only, only has to do with you, not you, but the person sent it to. It's, it's.
It's about respect for their time.
Okay, Meredith.
And, well, I mean, I would say, please raise your hand if you feel that I have barred you from speaking to the board or being able to do stuff.
They're not gonna do that.
They're not gonna, we've already, we've.
Please don't do that, we don't want anybody getting in trouble. Um, so when I.
I'm gonna raise, I'm gonna raise my hand, I probably shouldn't, but I will.
How many do you?
What if?
I, Maria, you've tried to call me, you've emailed me, I have nothing to do with Meredith's office in Rhonda.
Yes. Yes.
I, Maria, you've tried to call me, you've emailed me, I have nothing to do with Meredith's office and Rhonda.
Well, wrong is.
I do the minutes and that is all I do, so any questions or asking me for stuff, I can't answer you.
See, and I look at you as our secretary, so it's my.
But I'm not, I'm just a recording secretary for all the S A U's.
We probably need to look at that, because it's difficult, like if there's something that needed to go on or shouldn't go on, or should've went on, and you can't get anybody to be on my go-to for that, um, thing and you couldn't answer it. So I had to wait until I was able to get over to Rhonda.
Because I'm only a recording secretary, that's all I do is record the minutes?
Yep.
And so everything else goes through Rhonda, Rhonda does everything else in the S A U office for the board.
Yep, while we're on that too, can I ask a quick question to you Meredith? Did Hampton Falls hire a secretary like a few months back that you know of? For the board?
No.
Okay.
Who takes a minutes? Do you take the minutes?
I take their minutes every now and again if needed.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's sometimes, there's four people.
Four of us that will swap. Okay, so there's four of them that rotate. Well, thank you for doing it because it's a thankless job. So back on to, um, we're gonna work hard to work together and, you know, maybe even a retreat, but I do want you all to know, we're waiting for the release to come out for the, um, from the state, and as soon as you get it and you've got it ready to go out to the public, we want the whole thing out in a nice format form, kind of like what you did with the smaller groups, but in a bigger scale.
Can I adjourn the policy?
Yeah, go ahead.
So now the, um, support services policy, which is E H dash R, um, on number five, it says records will be reviewed in their entirety, this is about, sorry, this includes right to know. This is about the administrative procedures for public access to district records, right to know requests. Records will be reviewed in entirety by the superintendent or his or her designated before they are released in order to ensure that no confidential or exempted information is disclosed. The district legal counsel may be consulted as necessary. I've added in there, if legal is required, the cost will be, co, will be charged out at the S A U twenty-one legal line item unless requested by the courts or an attorney, and the cost will be approved by the school board.
So I don't think you can change the policy to charge those charges to the S A U unless you have the conversation with the S A U board?
Well, we're not gonna supply thousands of dollars for legal to go through, yes, I do.
And then do we have a second?
Well, who's gonna pay, so if, if, this is my, this is my, this is my thought, if the Thomas Seabrook has requested a right to know, that's not by an attorney or by a court, or if the police department is, or any other department in the town, it comes out of the town manager's budget which is upstairs, it does not come out of individual budgets, let me finish. If the superintendent's office has staff in there and they are not comfortable with doing a right to know, then that's either an issue that where they need to be trained, or if there's legal counsel that needs to review that so that they feel comfortable sending that right out, that out, that right to know out, then it shouldn't come out of the Seabrook School Board's bu- budget, because we have had, I don't know how many right, and they weren't just on the board, how many right to knows that have been requested that we had no idea went out the door, and that we've tried, paid all this money for right to knows to be released, for an attorney to go in there and view them. We have trainings through Primax, we have trainings through the New Hampshire School Board Association, we have trainings through the municipality association that will show you what can be released and what cannot be released on a right to know. So I don't think it's fair that the Seabrook School Board's budget for legal has to, um, absorb all these right to know when it says right in there that, um, you told us Meredith in an email that not all right to knows require a right, um, a legal charge, yet we have been paid, we have paid thousands of dollars, um, we also will address at another meeting, as we're still getting clarification on legal charges, because if there's a legal charge from an attorney and it required a phone conference with the superintendent and her secretary, and we never ever got any documentation that our attorney spoke to you or had a consult with you, why are we paying for that charge? That makes no sense. So like if, if I have an attorney and he needs, and he's working for me and I have him contact somebody, they always provide me with the information that they provide, contacted them what the discussion was, yet we have all these legal charges and we have no documentation supporting what the conversation was, or were we even aware that you spoke with them?
Probably so, because it's my job to run the organization and to address issues, and when I have to consult legal counsel, I have the responsibility and prerogative to do that under policy, so.
Okay, so the problem is, is that we were never notified, we have no idea what the conversation was, yet it's our legal counsel, and you guys have your own legal budget, yet.
Which is to deal with S A U matters, that's correct. And so when there are matters.
It's a S A U matter if, if your staff does, and I'm not being disrespectful to them, because there's probably things at the town hall that people don't know how to do, and the town manager may handle things the way he wants. But to do thousands and thousands of dollars on right to know, I mean after a while, it'd be more cost effective to do the training than have the Seabrook School Board having to pay out of their legal budget.
So some of those right to know requests were initiated by the board and some of the legal counsel was because the board was not agreeing with the opinion of both legal counsel and the superintendent, and so.
You know what, sir, we should never give a ninety-one A.
If we don't, if we don't agree with the superintendent, then that would be your legal counsel that would pay for that, not us. If we're not agreeing with you, then you would have legal counsel consult with you, not our legal counsel consult with you, because that makes no sense.
It, when there's Seabrook matters, they fall under the Seabrook budget.
Please don't over there in the corner, I'm trying to hear a matter.
That's, that's not true though, that's not true Meredith, if, if the Seabrook School Board is having, having a disagreement with you over a legal issue, then you should be using your attorney, not us, because that's a conflict of interest.
When the right to know, when the right to know request pertains to a Seabrook matter and the attorney is representing the Seabrook School District, right, they may speak with me, but they're making the decision to represent the Seabrook School District. If the board disagrees with that, that's not about me, that's about.
No, that's your point, the point.
But that is the point, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
So let us put a policy in that prior approval, prior approval for expenditures moving forward for legal, we're gonna have to figure it out, how we're gonna, whether you're gonna give the board chair or Jen or whoever the authority to work with the superintendent on that, but we need to keep a better track of what's going on with that, and I totally agree with you. So if you want to put something in place tentatively until the other two board members are here, go ahead and do that, because it, we can't keep doing it, and, and I will say, I again, hope that we can learn and figure out how we're gonna work together so that when there's things needed, um, that it doesn't have to go to the level of requesting a ninety-one A. It should be, yeah, you know what, if we can do this, we'll make it happen. That, that's the piece that we all need to work on together, and I hope that you're willing to work with us on that.
I, I would hope that requests come to me before they come as a ninety-one A request, but they haven't.
Yes, they have.
They don't seem.
Okay, so moving forward.
How many times did we ask for a link?
We want them to.
Okay.
All right?
Exactly.
Which legal counsel advised was before shared outside of a non-public comment, so if we're gonna have that conversation, let's have it.
Yep, go ahead, tell them.
So the school board member shall not be charged for a ninety-one A request ever, that's gonna be added to it too.
Yes.
I'll put a legal file, because I have a whole pilot document that I checked with our legal counsel we have. And they're on the first reads too, so we'll have to do that when the time comes. And then.
Just to clarify, is this just for right to know requests, or are you also, would it be any legal matter like special education?
No, not special education.
No, special education is not open for compensation.
I just wanna make sure that, uh.
Anything that's not special ed?
No, no, definitely not.
So labor relations, contracts, so any of it don't matter.
If it's our issue in Seabrook, definitely our issue, absolutely. But if it's not, and it's something that really isn't necessary with legal and spending, we'd appreciate it. I mean, we could really put a freeze on that right now, we could say, hey, we're gonna freeze everything, we're in a default budget. You know, it's coming ahead here, school's just started, but instead we're trying to work at that we just be a little more careful of the expenditure piece of it and moving forward, and we can talk more on that however, but right now, let's move on and finish up these policies, I don't know, if you have left.
I can leave the rest for, for next year.
No, go right ahead, let's get them up, because that's one of our most important things, and we gotta live by those. We need those, um, so that we can do what we need to do.
Okay, so, uh, this is my policy, so I don't think I have any more right now, hold on, um. Because we have to do the first reads too.
Mm-hmm.
All right, you wanna do the first reads, all right, because I have those.
Um, do you wanna do the first reads? Um, okay, or do we wanna, uh, how do you wanna do it, go ahead.
All right, so I have the, where's the agenda? Again. So the first read is the no discrimination, equal opportunity employment, anti-discrimination plan. Should I just read out the ones that I want, that I think we can have in there?
The ones that you have questions on or wanna change, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, I'll put that in the main order. So I'm gonna table, because I'm gonna have legal review of these ones, the, um, copy of the inventory and a management of assessments. D I D, Maria?
Yep. Which one is that Kelly?
D I D.
D I D, so if you go to the next page.
Yep.
Get on this, oh, no, oh no, you don't have that in mind.
No, I don't.
I'll help you with that.
Okay.
All right, so the D I D, we're gonna have legal, uh, legal review of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the copy of the programs for pupils with disabilities. I'm assuming that because that it states that it's a priority and required by law, that it's, is it exactly as it states by law, or was there information added into that? So I guess that's my question on these.
Well, the information is below, it's come from the New Hampshire School Board Association and was reviewed by the policy committee. It includes, the additions are specific information about I D A in section five oh four, which was not previously included, um, and safeguards, and, um, it should have always been recommended by law, so that was a change.
But recommended or?
Should have always been required, it was previously listed.
So there's nothing on here that's just recommended, it's all priority required by law?
Required by.
Yes, there's nothing on here that's added.
Correct.
Okay, so that one's good to go.
Good.
Okay.
So that, and we can.
Yep.
Oh, what is the withdrawal of pregnant students?
Huh?
Huh?
Are you, are we still on those, the policies?
Yeah.
The pregnant students?
Yeah, I'm looking at that one too.
Why is that being withdrawn? Because that information is included in another policy, I H B C A.
I have that one too.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the programs for pupils with disabilities have a four, same thing, nothing's added there, everything is legal requirement?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So that one is I H B A R, that's good to approve. The next one, um, is copy of student records, can we table that, because I want to see if everybody is here?
Yeah, so this table.
Table J R H.
Okay.
J R A?
Oh yeah, oh J R, sorry. Um, copy of student discipline and due process, I'm gonna have legal review of this.
Okay, what number is it?
That is J I C D.
Yep.
Um. Oh, so. Okay, the next one was, I'm pretty sure it was on there, V G A A. Yes, um, so I make a motion that we do not accept that one, and I'll tell you why. Um, it says the board will allow opportunity for public comment on policy proposal for board policy, that's fine. Alternatively, this is what's added, although not required for committee meetings, the board could require the policy committee to allow a certain period of time for public comment in relative to policies under consideration by the committee. Um, any changes agreed upon or requested by the board during the first reading shall be made by the. And it's, it says, policy committee scratched out and then added superintendent's designated prior to the second reading. And then it says, in the next board, and then it says, um, there's minor revisions of the policy that I read, and I just think that we need to just keep it the way it was, I don't.
Okay, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna change it, so do we need to do anything?
Just a motion not to change, V G A A.
B, B J A?
Yeah.
No change.
Right, because it also says, in cases of unusual and unexpected urgency, the board may waive the second meeting limitation and take immediate act, action to adopt new policy. And then it says, or suspend or revise existing, in such instances, the meeting minutes should reflect the nature, which that part was fine, but it also says that, that it wouldn't, that the superintendent, not the, the policy committee.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we keep that the same.
Okay, do you wanna do it, do you wanna do it?
These are just first reads, you don't have to make a motion on it, do we?
Maybe if we keep them the same.
Yeah.
Right?
When you make a motion at the second, the.
Can we do it the fir-, do we have to do it on the second or the first read, because why do we?
We're just taking it off the list, you don't need to make a motion.
So we're taking off one of them.
Oh, okay, so we'll take it off the list, that was B B?
B G A A.
B G A A, okay.
Um. First reading, I don't understand why we have a new policy on here on school bus routes, it says a parent guardian, so a used to be that they would have to, parents would have to put an appeal in if they were not, if they were not comfortable with, um, so if they have a bus route and they're not comfortable with the bus route, the parent can request a change from the transportation coordinator. If they're not happy with the answer, they could submit an appeal to, um, the business administrator, but that's been taken out, and basically it says that we can go by the policy of B A A A, which would be, I'm assuming, the superintendent, it says a parent or guardian is satisfied with the determination of the transportation coordinator may seek a waiver of this policy and the provisions of the board, so basically it would be up to the superintendent to deny that, birth, or approve that versus doing an appeal.
No, the board would have to waive the policy. A per, parent guardian is satisfied with the determination of the transportation coordinator may seek a waiver of this policy under the provisions of board policy, B A A A, which is board waiver of policy.
Well, the B A A A one that I saw was, um, because I looked it up, it's, hold on. School board policy to the administrative procedure, so it's also an administrative procedure, and it says that the administrative procedure, the policy contained in the new policy, um, manual, um, oh, a po, a person may request an exception to any board policy or application by the same submitting a letter to the superintendent. The, the request shall identify the name, address, person making the request. And then it says, the superintendent or his or her shall conduct a significant investigation within a request for the exception as to be able to formulate a recommendation for the board.
Right.
Among the factors to be evaluated are the relevant facts related to the request and the rationale of both policy and request for the exception. The deposition of prior requests for the exception of the same or similar policies following the superintendent's investigation. The superintendent may place a request for exception on the agenda and shall report the board's circumstances surrounding the agenda and her's or her recommendation deposition. The person requesting the exception shall be notified in advance with an agenda item and may be given reasonable opportunity to address the board before the board determines whether to grant the request, so they have to go through a whole entire procedure of an investigation versus just sending an appeal.
Well, anytime there's an appeal, we're gonna conduct an investigation, we're gonna look at what is the stop currently, what is the issue with the pickup or the route that they have a concern about, so we're gonna investigate that and gather information, and then we're gonna make a decision, and if they don't agree with that decision, right, or I'm gonna bring, or not even if they don't agree with it, I'm gonna bring that recommendation to the board. If I'm saying, I recommend that you waive this policy, I'm gonna bring that forward.
Right, but if you don't recommend it, and then it says, exceptions to administrative procedures shall be made in accordance with the procedure established by the superintendent.
But there, there's not a procedure under this policy, it's spelled out in your policy.
Right, so there's no, I don't think we need to change it, I think it's fine anyways.
Okay, okay. It doesn't come to the board right now, so perfect.
Right, but they have a right to make an appeal. They can do an appeal.
Correct.
Well, that's good. All right.
What else can we add?
Um, the next first read is um, the, oh. The facility plan and unused district property, so this is where I have a question. Um, is this just for charter schools, or is this for any and all unused district property?
This is for any and all unused district property, we have to report to. This is for any and all unused district property, we have to report to the state on any unused district property annually.
Okay. So this.
State law.
Okay, well, I understand it has to report, we have to report it. But if we report it, I just wanna make sure this has nothing to do with space within the school that, that we are, that we as a board are not able to make recommendations of our property within, I mean, our space within the school.
This unused facility.
Yeah.
Shall mean any district-owned school building, which is not currently used
Yeah. Yeah.
for academic purposes, extracurricular, administrative school functions, or sports, and for which the board has not approved a written plan for future use.
Right.
So that's not your current school buildings that have students in them on a daily basis.
So what about upstairs?
It's part of your building, right, it's not a separate building.
Okay, just making sure that if it has nothing to do with it, there has to specifically be learning space. Right, that's what I'm pretty much concerned about, okay.
So do you, do we need to?
I think.
Reword it?
We are, if, I don't understand, if we've al- did we always have to?
Nope, it was a new law.
It's a new law, okay. Hold on, I'm sorry, as long as it's not, that we're not able to specify certain space within the school being used, do you understand?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Then the accommodation of pregnancy-related medical conditions, the only concern I have is that it says reasonable accommodations would include elevator access.
Mm-hmm.
So what is, what if, can you explain that to me?
Well, you don't have a second floor, so.
I'm just making sure that you're not stating that if we have any type of nursing room put upstairs, that we don't have to. We, Jen, if you're in the school board, if you're in the withdrawal committee, you know what I mean? We have to become, you don't wanna have to put an elevator in.
Uh, would the, the, is that the second floor in the elementary?
No, upstairs.
Yes. Yeah, so, do we need an elevator there?
No.
No.
Okay.
We're just making sure that we're not making it into anything that.
This is a common, I don't think you have any elementary school students who are going to be pregnant, so I think you're safe.
Well, then why are we having?
Might be some middle schoolers.
You never know.
I don't know.
It's Jen.
I mean, definitely.
Middle school, yes. The second floor is in the elementary, not in the middle school.
Yeah, I know that, you never know, Meredith. Um. And then, um, I don't know, with therapy animals, you guys can just add on the therapy animals.
What it, what is that, can you, what do you mean with, with therapy?
So. So basically, sa- it's just basically saying that we are okay with therapy animals coming into the school.
We have a problem though.
I just, yeah, probably as long as we don't, it's not gonna end up becoming something that we have to provide funding for.
We have a problem. Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Right.
So that's not the case, right, Meredith?
Gotcha.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, sure.
Yep.
Right. I think that's all of them. So basically. Good with A C. A C R. A C A, disinformation, harassment, previous school, is that a legal one?
That, yeah, that, yeah, you have legal set aside for legal.
That was two. Okay.
A C A.
Yes, legal. Um, the A C A C, what do you have down for that one?
I have a clarifying question out.
Okay.
You don't have any magic conspiracy, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Jen, what do you have for A C A C?
Having done policies, that's one I am listening to.
I know. Thank you for doing that, by the way, cause it really is one of the duties, and we need to go over it, and it's really fun. I have legal, D I D, and J I C D. Trouble with legal, that's right.
Down, D I D, J R A, and J I C D.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep. Perfect.
So you're tabling A C A, D I D, J I C D, and J R A?
J R A.
I don't, I think you should just run to more clarification on those.
J R A.
Right?
J R A, I H B A R, that one's good to go. I H B A is good to go.
So these are what, the ones we're gonna need a motion for, remove deceptive reading.
Yeah.
So keep them in a.
We don't need a motion.
Okay.
We don't need a motion, just like the reading.
So just leave, move them forward?
We just have to make a motion on removing them, correct, or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, B G A A. We're taking off the list.
Okay. Motion to remove B G A A, keep going.
Um.
And E E A B.
What?
We had E E A B on that list. That was about last year.
E E A B.
Those were the only two you listed as not wanting to make any changes to, and then you previously listed J R A, D I D, and J I C D policies that you wanted to review, have reviewed by legal.
Yep, and the other ones I'll sign to Denise.
So, we don't need a motion to move those forward.
Okay.
Alright.
Good. So my clarifying question was just through your school board association dues, the staff attorney at the school board association reviews all of those, that's part of your membership dues, so that it doesn't cost you additional legal fees, so what I'm hearing you say you're gonna do additional review with legal.
For what?
For, um, the New Hampshire School Board Association, and thank you for bringing that up, because they actually, um, they have a department that will, uh, review anything, they'll do an audit of all our policies and come back and say.
Yeah. But, but they wrote these.
Yeah, they did, but they'll still help to, to, um, help us without having to spend, um, money on anything because they're there, so attorneys available to us. So.
Right, but I think just cause they look at them, it doesn't mean.
Right, and recommendations to move them forward, cause I've noticed that on a lot of them, cause it will tell you the retired rulebook and, um, on board docs, and you can see there's been so many that were changed, but really just recommend or not even needed to change, and when I looked at them, I was like, what is this?
Retired too.
And a lot of retired, I don't know, which one, I mean, I weren't keeping up with it.
May I, may I ask two questions, all questions?
Mm-hmm.
If you've hired a new law firm, can you just send that information to me at some point so that we can pay?
Yeah, that we will talk about.
Cause we'll have to set them up as a vendor.
Yeah, we'll talk about that whenever we're at that point.
Whenever you're ready, just send that over. I just wanna remind you, just, it takes a little bit to set them up as a vendor, we gotta get W nine, get that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we'll let you know just soon as we know what's going on.
My second question is, uh, I'm sorry, may I just miss this?
Yeah.
Who am I, or any of us, um, getting approval from for legal? Oh, you haven't decided yet if we need a legal, um, counsel?
Who are you, you?
So if I need, so we need, sometimes like, we need legal, um,
Yeah, yeah.
re- like, um, advice for like warrant articles, like legally as part of the audit process, we always need a legal
Yes, we'll have it ready by you as soon as.
recommendation, I just need to know who I'm getting approval from
We get a.
before, cause there's something we just need, need a counsel.
Right. Right, we got a couple people out, and if there's an emergency, can you guys take a vote that if, if there is a, um, issue, um, Matt can, um, contact me just until we get back and figure out what we're doing here? Um, if it's obviously, if it's an emergency situation, um.
Well, if it's a warrant article, then that's obviously.
Right, a warrant article, but that's not ready yet, so we get.
Not a warrant article, that is like the one we had last year, where that was discussed with legal counsel and people to change it. That's not, we're not paying for that.
Okay. Okay, so, just give us a little, give us a little, um.
Just for your counsel, just the legal.
We received a bill about, legal counsel about changing the warrant article at the deliberative session, look at, cause I was just filling, you don't know what I mean.
So.
At the warrant, at the deliberative session, yes, you've received a bill.
No, no. We received a bill prior to deliberative session, conversation about a citizen wanting to change the warrant article.
Mm-hmm.
And our legal counsel was talked about that, but the board had no knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So will, so what we'll do, Matt, if something comes up, we'll have to have an emergency meeting until we get this rectified, since we're not ready yet, that's all, alright? So we'll move on, what are we going on?
I think we're done with the policy.
Okay, that was a big one, and Kelly, I just really wanna commend you for doing that, cause it's a lot of work. And, um, I think the rest of us can probably be given bits and pieces and go through sections also to help out.
We have to go through the tablet they told you.
Yeah, cause it's a lot, and I appreciate it, so thank you for getting us caught up a little bit, so we can move forward, and then the other thing, let me see.
Your point, remember to joint board communication?
Yes, so I wanted to talk to you about that, so I got that email, they were gonna meet tomorrow, but I think they put it off until, just before the joint board meeting?
After, I have questions.
Okay, so just after it, perfect. So I have no idea what this new committee is, and I don't have a full board here tonight, so I would rather that we find out what it is, because lord knows, we've got so many committees and things that everybody's doing right now, that I would need to know. And I did ask for a little more information on it, and they really didn't have a lot, cause it, it's just a starter. What is it, a P R group, like for? Is it, I mean, now, if anything, cause I looked on the joint board thing, um, that was the night we were here really late, so we didn't go over, and they did something with it. But I don't, um.
Yeah, there's not much more information than what was in the minutes and what was shared with you in that email from your member.
So not much.
The, the goal of the board is to try to, the, that, joint, the proposal to the joint board was to try to improve communication, to examine our communication tools and how we're sharing and how boards themselves are sharing information, and so they voted to create a committee.
Okay, and we'll, so we'll put that off until, um, next meeting, which hopefully will be sooner. Um.
Um, can I, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
So policy C H D, it says in the absence of established board policy or board direction, the superintendent shall assume responsibility for making necessary decisions. In such instances, principals or other administrative or instructional personnel shall gain approval of the superintendent before taking action. If the situation which arises where school, with the school where the board has provided no guide for administrative action, the superintendent shall have the power to act and his or her decision shall be subject to review and ratification by the action of the board at the regular meeting. And then it says it shall be the duty of the superintendent to inform the board promptly of such actions of the needed policy. So, I think it said, so my, what I'd like to see happen is it says in, in the absence of an established board policy, a board direction, the superintendent shall contact the board when making necessary decisions, so in other words, at least letting us know what policy or decision needs to be made instead of us having, having to wait till the next board meeting. So at least we know, cause in the other policies, it states that the school board should be notified of any issues within the school.
Yep, so, does that a motion?
Yes, so a motion to add in, they had to contact the board. And, the board chair, how about that?
Yeah, but I, I don't, I like it, I like it when she, you know, if it's a situation, it comes from you, the board, yeah.
Or the board and the. The board. The board. Okay.
Cause then that makes more emails, if you, or more work for whatever needs to be done with it, I think that if it comes from her or from you or whatever, and it's, and everybody's aware, we just F Y I and move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so motion.
So that is C H D, and it's basically just to let the board know instead of adding a letter to the next.
Yeah. So, um, Jen?
Yep.
Second, okay, and then all in favor?
So what, what policy was that?
C H D.
C H D?
Yeah.
Kelly, Jen, and all.
I'm sorry. And Kelly, you're gonna send me all the verbiage for the train, as you want, correct?
Yeah. I love the train. Yes, please.
Okay.
Alright, and then I, can I ask a question, both cameras?
Yes, yeah, Meredith, that should true.
Is Dan here, maybe he knows it.
Dan?
Yeah.
Can you come up for one second, please?
We just have a question about the cameras.
Sure.
So when the camera, so when the surveillance cameras are running, do they, how do we determine when they're actually recording, are they?
They're usually the motion activated.
The motion activated, so if they have motion, they would automatically record?
Yeah.
How long does that stay recording?
Uh, well, what do you mean?
So like, you know, sometimes?
How long can you view it, like, can you view it for only forty-eight hours or forever?
Uh, we haven't filled up the space yet, so.
Oh, so it's, it's pretty, has been spaced.
Yeah, it should be months.
Hmm.
Okay.
Good to know.
And then, um.
So they're running at all times?
Yeah, they're always on them.
Okay.
But they don't record unless there's motion.
Unless there's motion.
Yeah.
Good, and ev- all of them are working, cause they're, you know, failing out, so, eh, they're all working well, everything's good with them?
Seems to be.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, and hopefully we get you some help. You're all the boys this evening tonight, um, is that, is that open, so that we can get you some help?
Yeah, we're gonna need that.
Yeah, it's, there's been some applicants, so we have to do reviews and stuff.
Okay, well, good luck with that, you don't need to be alone.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, what else we got?
Like standard read request?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yep.
There's no name or anything, so.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and.
Is something else that was supposed to say, how was?
Well, we, yeah, and we have.
Cause we only have just the meetings left.
Yeah, and we have, um, we have to go back in the non-public for a few minutes too.
A few minutes.
Yeah. I know.
Do you have something else to go?
I don't think so.
Do you want to read the future meetings into the record?
Um, they're on the agendas, um, I don't think we need to go through all them, if you.
Okay.
Unless you want to, I think that most, you know, most importantly right now is our, um, our next meeting is slated for November twelve. And then, um, we have a budget review possibly November eighteen. We're gonna get with the board, you know, make sure everybody's on board with that, you said that already, so hopefully they'll be ready. Um, so, yeah, that's good, and then, um, yeah, we need to go back in the non-public for a little bit. You guys can stay here if you want, comfy, we've gotta go out.
Oh, you do, do, we do have a joint board meeting October twenty-eighth that we should announce.
Yes, joint board meeting October twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Everybody should go attend, those are good. Come on over. Um. Yeah, I've been just looking to see the notes here, we have anything else? Alright, so motion to go into non-public, we're going into, um.
Will be a public comment?
Not right now, we're going into non-public.
It's, you can't, we want to be one or not.
We just wanna go home.
Just tell us if there's gonna be one.
This is like a whole one, you're just a moment.
It is the game.
Yeah.
Maria, what letter are you going into non-public on?
The same, C. C, yeah.
At eight fifty-seven P M?
Yes.
So would you give this?
And who made the motion?
Motion.
Motion made.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Um, who second? Jen?
Um, in favor, roll call.
Yes. Roll call, Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maria?
Yes. Alright. We're gonna, guys, we're, we're gonna, um, stay right here, um, and so we're gonna have your stuff out for a little bit, hopefully not long. We're gonna stay right where we are, cause we have things we need.
I just have to add this motion to come out. All right, so motion to end the non-public session and resume the public meeting at 9:50 p.m. And who is going to make that motion?
I will.
Second.
And Maria.
I do.
And Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Maria?
Yes.
And then is there a motion for the extended leave?
We did that.
We already did that.
I think I read that one too.
Yeah, I have notes.
I don't know.
So I'll make a motion and a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At nine. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At nine fifty one?
Yeah. Drive home slow. I know everybody's probably exhausted.
What about public comment?
The meeting's over.